Can you read yours?
Can you read yours?
Okay, good morning.
Good morning.
I want to welcome each one of you to the Halifax County Boards of Commissioners meeting on this, looking for my agenda, what happened to it? Oh, here it is. On this Monday, March 10th, 2025, 9:30 a.m. These mics are really working, folks. Wow, first time I said something, it kind of scared me a little bit. But you can hear it, can't you, Tommy? Our Deputy Sheriff, I guess, he can hear it. Okay, we're good. I want to welcome each one of you here this morning. Thank you for being here. We have a good representation in the OI's. Thank all of you for coming. We're going to, we will officially come to OI this time. We're going to be led by the invocation by Commissioner Redden, and then we're going to do the pledge of allegiance in unison. Those of you who wish to join us, please stand.
Please bow your heads. Heavenly Father, we come before you today with gratitude for the opportunity to serve our community. God, our thoughts, words, and decisions so that they reflect wisdom, fairness, and integrity. Grant us the clarity to lead with purpose, the patience to listen with understanding, and the courage to act in the best interest of all. May we work together in unity, seeking solutions that uplift and strengthen Halifax County. Bless those we serve, and may our efforts bring positive change. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which you stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, at this time, I do want to thank Commissioner Redden for leading the invocation. Thank you for your participation. At this time, we will turn our attention to the adoption of the agenda. I trust that my colleagues have had an opportunity to review the agenda. If it's your pleasure, I would so entertain a motion for your approval. So, move.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Commissioner Webb, second by Commissioner Silver, and further discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. The next item on the agenda is the conflict of interest statement. In accordance with the Halifax County Board of Commissioners' Rules of Procedure in the North Carolina General Statute, Section 153A-44, it is the duty of every member present to go on all matters coming before the board unless there's a conflict of interest as determined by the board by law. Does any board member have a known conflict of interest with respect with any matters coming before us today, Commissioner Silver?
No, 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 sir. No conflict.
No conflict.
No conflict?
No conflict.
No conflict.
Madam Clerk, let me ask you to reflect that six commissioners present do not have any conflict with matters coming before us today.
Yes, sir.
Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. We have item A, which is property tax collection refunds and releases February 2025, and also item B, budget amendments. Commissioners, do you all have any questions or comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion for your approval.
Move for approval.
Motion made by Vice Sheriff Davis, second by Commissioner Redden, and further discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Moving next to the special recognitions. I don't know who that first guy is there. Presentation honoring Vernon J. Bryant Servister, Halifax, North Hampton Regional Airport Authority. We're happy to have with us today the Chair of that Board and my good friend Ralph Johnson. And also, we got better board members here. Let the new guys take my place. I agree. We're happy to have Ty P. here and also Vice Sheriff Jim Cooper. You guys leaving as well?
Mr. Chairman and board members, I appreciate the opportunity to be here to honor one of our board members that has been leaving his term. And of course, I had a little bit of a presentation, but just kept ahead of him. What I'd like to do is give Halifax County Board, Halifax North Hampton Airport Authority, make a resolution honoring Vernon Bryant as one of our members that his term is ended and he stepped away gracefully. We appreciate his service that he gave us. So I have a resolution from our board, and resolution reads, honoring the service of Vernon J. Bryant on Halifax North Hampton Regional Airport Authority. Whereas Mr. Vernon J. Bryant was elected by the Halifax Board of Commissioners in 2015 to serve on the Halifax North Hampton Regional Airport Authority. And whereas Mr. Bryant, many years of service on various boards, strong experience in local government, and intimate knowledge of Halifax County as a native of the area, made him a valuable asset to the airport authority. And whereas Mr. Bryant has served as the Chairman of the Halifax County Board of Commissioners for his entire tenure on the Halifax, on the airport authority, and as a result, he has provided keen insight into strategic growth and development by the Halifax North Hampton Regional Airport Authority, fully understanding the critical importance of the airport to overall economy of the county. And whereas Mr. Bryant was also always and willing to continue to be an ambassador for the airport at both the local and state levels to make proactive legislative changes, advocate for adequate funding and strategic plan for the future of airport development. And whereas Mr. Bryant voluntarily, integrity, expertise, insights, professionalism stand out as another board member, privilege to the aviation community in the county. And whereas Mr. Bryant, and whereas the service for the airport are big for me. Okay, I'll continue reading. Now therefore, be resolved that the Halifax North Hampton Regional Airport Authority hereby expresses appreciation and gratitude to Mr. Bryant, outstanding contribution and service to the authority, and wishes him well in his continued service in the Halifax County and all future endeavors. Be it resolved, further resolved, the original of this resolution to be presented to Mr. Bryant, and a copy of the resolution spread of hundred minutes of the Halifax North Hampton Regional Airport Authority this fourth day of March 2025, signed by me, Ralph Johnson, Chairman of Halifax North Hampton Regional Airport Authority.
All right, with that being said, we are me or who, we can be acceptors of it. And also, it's not a conflict, so I'll make a motion for that. Can I get a second? Second. All right, second by, motion made by Commissioner Webb, second by Commissioner Silver to accept that. In further discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
And I have something for you from the board.
Oh, okay.
Time to rush the meeting. How would you like to be?
Sure.
Okay, all right.
I see my granddaughter's been home at the house. I should have brought her, she was just lifting paper off.
That's a photograph of the airport side, or the aviation side of our airport terminal building, which is, I took my phone after we opened up and elected that.
Adam Reed here runs Roseburg, Amcor, and we're going to start this, because usually Adam Reed is here. And Adam Reed here at Roseburg is happy to have him take my place in that board. He has ties to you, long time resident, and he's here at Halifax County, the Women Education Board as well. And also Jim Cooper, Vice, our board.
Can we get one for thirty number ever here to join Mr. Reed? It's in the way. Perfect, now we're, we're going to. Perfect, now we're, we're going to.
We got the right to have you over.
Yeah.
She did it?
And y'all know me, I got to say something. Please sit here for a second. I do want to say thank you so much to Ralph, who is chair of the board. Ralph used to be the, also, he used to be the person that's in charge of that board. Then he became a board member, he's been chair for a long time. But Ralph, thank you for your leadership. Appreciate, you know, the board and what they're doing. You know, our airport has a level of misadventure in this community, just like, you know, we talked about the Mert Park last time, and we talked about the Welling Hills, you know, that's a hidden jewel in this community, you know, the airport board. It's going well financially, you know, it's moving in a good direction, and people utilize the airport. And of course, his company, Roseburg, you know, they use the airport. There are other companies that frequently use the airport. We thank, we thank governors for coming in on the airport. I never forget, Governor Pat McCullough was here one time, and Governor, ex-Governor Plito, I hope you don't mind if I say it, but he didn't know I tied necktie. So I had tied necktie. Anyway, I mean, folks have really utilized our airport, they can, and that's just a key to our, we're heading in a good direction, but we just need to, we just probably need to move it up a notch, but I tell you, leadership on that board is what it happens to. Anyway, thank you so much. I enjoy my service, and I'm gonna miss it, but just like.
We're going this year, and one thing I'd like to say, Vernon and I have been friends for a long time. He was with probation for a while, I was with one of Ralph's police department. We got to know each other back then. And it's been an honor to have you on our board. You've added a lot to our board, a lot of insight, wisdom, and everything.
Thank you. And last thing I'm gonna say to Ralph, go back to Ralph and take no stuff. Christina, where is one of you?
I'm right here.
And this young lady, she's the whip. She does a lot for the airport board, it's like a lot of things in the county. She's our deputy county manager, and she's also the head on that board. And Ralph knows she is go-to boss. Anyway, thank you all so much. Wow, that's not a. Okay, next item, we have item B, retirement resolution for Bonnie R., Bonita, excuse me, Bonita R. Cruz, Emergency Medical Services. And Commissioner Jimmy Silver is gonna make that presentation.
Ms. Cruz, can I get your step back here?
And she's got some folks with her, she'll tell you about those in a little bit, I'm sure.
It's an honor to be here today. For me, most important thing, my daughter's saying, three first jobs, first job, is retired, and that means that you raise that title. So proud of you, yes. Resilience whereas, Bonita R. Cruz decides to retire, but the uninsured house of truth of Halifax County Emergency Medical Services Department, paid the February 25th of the years 2020. And whereas she has spent 20 years of the role of governor, Bonita has also served many positions of honor and privilege and faith as well as being a dedicated service citizen of Halifax County. Now therefore, be resolved, that on this day, Monday, March 25th, Halifax County Board of Commissioners, due honor, is it Bonita R. Cruz, former doctor of medicine, which is an important unit of the community. Vernon J. Bryant, Chairman of Halifax County Board of Commissioners, President of the Land of Business, President of the Board, please stand and leave a motion.
Okay, Commissioner Silver has made that motion there. Second his motion. Second by Commissioner Redden, and in further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign.
Would you like to say anything to that staff this time?
I would just like to take the opportunity, I'm gonna let Commissioner Bryant slide today. Because we put the high school together, and he mispronounced my name. Slide today. I just want to say that I am extremely grateful for being able to serve the community in my capacity, especially leaving out with emergency medical services. I have a great group of people, and I would encourage you all to really support them going forward. It's very important. It's very important. When you call now 1-1, you want the best guys to show up. And we have the best guys, we have our supervisors here, they're not the boots on the ground, but they're the ones that keep everything running smoothly. And I can say this without prejudice, that they are a dedicated, they're one of the best, dedicated, most hardworking people that you all have. So I just wanted to say, thank you to my crew for being such a good crew. They're just a great bunch of guys, every last one of them. And I'm just very thankful for Jay to spend the last 25 years with them.
You got.
And I have my daughter here, who is the elections director, and she has a hard job and is difficult, so I ask that you guys can come in to support her. Because we all know what they're in here. And I'm grateful for my sister, Wanda, because she is the one who encouraged me to apply for a position here, because I was living at the federal level, but she, she was my encouragement, so I started out at the health department. So I'm grateful for that. And I thank everybody, some of the health department crew are here, and I know some of them from back in the day. And I'm just grateful for everybody.
Yeah, that's what you says a lot about that. To the ladies from her day, she made a joke. And we'll let Commissioner Bryant off the air, because you know you were brave as soon as you hit some hot.
Let's give her a big hand.
She want her sister, her whole crew to step up here. She want out if you don't move your.
I will say her family and all of EMS, come on up. You even got the leader of EMS here with you, too.
Y'all gotta pull in like you love each other, because you know you do. Back feet on that line. Listen, can you turn that off? Perfect. All right. That's a good looking crew. One, two, three. One, two, three.
Let's give her a big hand. Commissioner Silver, you're gonna get $20 when you leave from this meeting. You pulled me out of that one. Bonita and I did go to high school together, she was, yeah, she was behind me, though, because, and she was also a smart young lady in high school, too. But anyway, thank you so much for your service. And by the way, Ms. Cruz, just before you leave, we got about 40 or 50 boards, and you can volunteer for any one of them, okay?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda, we have proclamation honoring Women's History. We have a vice chair, Ms. Marla Belgrade, from the Human Relations Committee. Ask her to come forward this time, please. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. I am very honored to be here today as a woman, and just listening to all the incredible women in the room and in our community. I just want to mention that I am not originally from Halifax County, but through my students, as a teacher at Kipford Public, I have loved the county, and that's the reason I'm staying here, because I'm originally from Belize, Central America, which is a nice topic. You can imagine the questions I get, why are you Halifax? The proclamation honoring Women's History Month 2025. Whereas, Women's History Month is a time to recognize and celebrate the vital contributions of women through our history, highlighting their role in shaping our communities, advancing educational opportunities, and inspiring future generations. And whereas, women educators, mentors, and leaders have played a pivotal role in shaping minds, inspiring transformative action, and strengthening the foundation of our communities, our economy, and our democracy. And whereas, the 2025 team, Moving Forward Together, Women Educating and Inspiring Generations, celebrates the collective strength and influence of women who have dedicated their lives to education, mentorship, and leadership. And whereas, from classrooms to boardrooms, grassroots movements to global initiatives, women have led the way in expanding educational opportunities, advancing the free marketplace of ideas, and nurturing future generations to strive for excellence and equity. And whereas, Halifax County has greatly benefited from outstanding female educators who contributed to the advancement of education and the development of our youth, including Lena Hill Smith, Mary Mackayberg, Leanna Bell Pittman, Dr. Willa Coopley, and Dr. Katrina Elliott, women whose dedication and commitment have left a lasting impact on students, families, and the broader community. And whereas, Women's History Month serves as an opportunity to honor the achievements of women educators and leaders, inspire future generations to pursue education and leadership roles, educate communities on their contribution as women from diverse backgrounds, unite individuals in celebrating women accomplishments, and envision a future that builds upon their legacy. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Halifax County Commissioners hereby recognize March 2025 as Women's History Month in Halifax County, and encourage all residents to recognize, honor, and celebrate the invaluable contributions of women who educated, mentored, and inspired prior generations, and to actively ensure that the contributions of women continue serve as a foundation for strengthening our county and advancing opportunities for future generations. Thank you so much.
Okay, you've heard the information coming from our vice chair of Human Relations. We need to adopt the 2025 Women's History Month proclamation to acknowledge and celebrate the vital contributions of women throughout history. It's your pleasure, so move. Motion made by Commissioner Webb, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Davis, and in further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, thank you so much. Appreciate all the work that you all do for us, too. And you know, not taking away from men, but you know, you know, our leader of the county is a female. Our vice, our deputy manager is a female. Our health department director is a female, so there are females all around, they're leading. And vice chair of this board is a female. Okay, next item, item D, 2025 Proclamation Honoring Social Work Month. We're gonna hear from, now we're gonna hear from my health director, Cheyenne James. Ms. James?
Good morning.
Good morning.
May I have to turn it on?
May I have to turn it on?
It's on now, I think. There you go. Yep.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
I stand before you this morning with the honor and privilege of acknowledging Social Work Month and our social workers here in Halifax County. They do a great service to our most vulnerable populations here in Halifax County, not only within our home department, but of course, within our DFS agencies, serving our families, serving our children, serving our pregnant moms, our foster children. They do a great service that is invaluable to those that need a month here in Halifax County, and I think that this proclamation is just one small thing that we can do to continue to encourage them and to support the work that they do, because it truly makes a difference in the lives that they impact, the people that they serve. I myself, and in part of some of the services, I wouldn't be here today without the support and resources that are, that come out of that work. And the proclamation reads, whereas people have entered the social work profession, whereas people have entered the social work profession for generations, because they genuinely care about helping improve the wealth of our people, families, communities, and our nation, whereas this year's Social Work Month theme is social work, compassion, and action, embodies the fact that social workers go through years of education and training, so they have the skills and expertise to transform their care for others into action that bring positive results. Whereas, the social work profession has worked for generations to improve living conditions in our nation, with social workers successfully pushing for social security, a 40-hour work week, Medicare, and a minimum wage. Whereas, social workers have helped this nation live up to its values by successfully advocating for equal rights for all people, no matter their race, sexual identity, gender, gender expression, culture, or religion, or religion. Whereas, social workers follow a code of ethics, which sets as the primary mission of the social work profession, the enhancement of human well-being, and meeting the basic human needs of all people, with particular attention to the needs and empowerment of those who are vulnerable, oppressed, and living in poverty. Whereas, the social work profession is one of the fastest-growing professions in the United States, with more than 800,000 people expected to be employed as a social worker by 2034. Whereas, social workers work in all parts of our society, including schools, social service agencies, veteran centers, veteran centers, and government, helping families, and communities secure services and policies they need to provide. Whereas, social workers are at the forefront of pressing issues our nation is addressing, including increased needs for mental health care, especially for children and adolescents, and substance use disorder treatment, and an increased economic and political condition. Whereas, social workers are one of the largest groups of mental health care providers in the United States, and are pressing for a social work interstate licensing compact that will improve mental health care delivery in our nation. Whereas, social workers help protect needs of children from abuse and neglect, provide services and support which helps strengthen families that are under stress, and help create new families through adoption. Whereas, research proves the presence of social workers in schools, hospitals, and assisted living facilities, and improves education and health outcomes, and quality of life for students, patients, and residents. Whereas, social workers continue to stand ready to visit our nation in overcoming present and future challenges, including ending the violence, improvement in health care, and mental health care for all, and urging lawmakers, lawmakers to adopt immigration reforms. Now therefore, in recognition of the numerous contributions by American social workers, Halifax County proclaims the month of March 2025 as National Social Work Month, and calling all citizens to join the National Association of Social Workers in Halifax County in celebration and support of the social work program.
Okay, you've heard the information coming from my health director. Any questions or comments? If not, we do need to adopt this proclamation proclaiming the month of March 2025 as Social Work Month. So move. Motion made by Commissioner Silver, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bell, and in further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Thank you, Ms. James. Appreciate all you do as well. The next item is the public comment, public comment period. Just before I call up someone who signed up for public comment, I do. Just before I call up someone who signed up for public comment, I do need to read a statement, and please ask that you govern yourselves accordingly. Open statement, public comment period. As required by John Statute 153A-52.1, the Halifax County Board of Commissioners provide a public comment period once a month as an item of business on its regular meeting agenda. Now is the scheduled time for public comment period. When I call your name, please come to the podium, state your name and address, and again speak. You have three minutes, and I would underscore three minutes, to address the board. If you have documents you want to give to the board, please hand those out before going to the podium. I will not go over the rules of the public comment period because they were posted by the door of this room. By signing up to speak, you have acknowledged that you are familiar with the rules and that you will abide by them. We will do our best to hear from everyone who has signed up to speak, but if we are unable to accommodate everyone in the time allotted, you'll be invited to speak during our next public comment period, at which time you'll be given priority without having to sign up again. The Halifax County Board of Commissioners appreciate your interest in Halifax County Government, and we look forward to hearing from you. At this time, I'm going to invite Ms. Juliette Harris to come up and follow my instructions, name, address, and you have three minutes. Thank you for being here. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Juliette Harris. My address is 121 Willows Drive in Fiona, Ohio, 27823. I am here this morning because I have a concern that I would like for you all to possibly visit if that's, if you all can. It's high-speed internet. I live about four miles north of Enfield, between Enfield and Halifax, and the internet, high-speed internet, it cuts off right there by Bender Holtz and Smith Chapel. When you leave that area, it stops right there and it picks back up at Green Acres, goes right there on the side of Green Acres Road. And we have been trying to get high-speed internet for years, and I guess about two years ago, they put the hose down and whatever for it, but no one else has came back to do anything about it. So if possible, I would like for you all to possibly look into that if you can, to find out more information about it for us, because we do have kids in that area and people that work, you know, needing high-speed internet. So I would appreciate it if you all could find out some more information and let us know within the next two to three months, if you all can. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harris. Okay, next, next item on the agenda is Item Four, Agenda Items. We have Walcott's Greater School District Lottery Request, which is Item A. Ms. Duncan, we're going to hear from you, our Finance Director. And we also have, I know we have the Superintendent and the Utilities Director here with us as well from Walcott's. Thank you all for being here.
Good morning.
Morning.
I'm reporting today to request your authorization for use of lottery, repair, and renovation funds, and the power on installation. The Talley Building houses cafeteria, gym, and classrooms for JROTC, of course, band of this nature. This is an allowable expense. The feeds will open Thursday afternoon around 1:92:44, and they have sufficient funds. That is, at the end of February in the account, they have seven hundred and forty-three thousand six hundred and four dollars and seventy-one cents. Their board has already voted and, by coincidence, signed off. I just need your authorization to submit this in to BPI.
Oh, Ms. Duncan, just for a matter of clarification, particularly for the new County Commissioners, and this is a teaching moment, can you tell us exactly what repair, renovation encompasses a little bit, very briefly?
Yes, sir.
Because that's, you know, a little bit different, right?
We've always had the basic lottery, but a few years ago, they created a special fund that is strictly for repair, renovation of classrooms. It could be used for anything else other than the academic buildings. So that's why we had to clarify on here that it does do classrooms, cafeteria, and gym. We previously used this several years ago to do some roof repairs to the gymnasium, and so that was also used, but it's an improved project.
And this is for all three school districts?
All three school districts have their own fund.
Right. Okay, all right. Just, I just want to, you know, this is just a little teaching moment, so we all can be on one accord with that. Okay. All right. Anything else you want to tell us? Any questions? Okay. Ms. Davis?
I just want to clarify, I guess, and this is the lottery funds that we were speaking of.
Yeah. It's the lottery fund, but it's...
Repair and renovation.
Right, it's, which is a little bit different. Okay. So moved, Commissioner. Okay, motion made by Commissioner Silver. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Webb, and a further discussion. Now, we all kill repair, renovation, what it means, right?
Yes, sir.
And who, you know, is available to all three districts. Okay. All right, no further comments or questions. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, thank you. Next item is Item B, Non-Competitive Procurement of Body Scanner for Halifax County Detention Center, Tony Rollins.
I'm going to turn this mic on and back away carefully. Good morning, Board. The first item I've got for you today concerns the purchase of a body scanner through a non-competitive process. Typically, when you're purchasing equipment that costs in excess of ninety thousand dollars, there's a statutory requirement for a public, a formal bid procedure. However, there are exceptions to formal bidding, and that is the case here. The county has received a two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar grant through the U.S. Department of Justice for the purchase of a body scanner at the detention center. The Sheriff's Office has identified a particular body scanner that offers unique features and performance qualities that are designed for the optimal safety of detainees and the staff at the jail. In pursuant to two statutes, one State Statute 143, one 29E, and Federal Code of Regulations 29 CFR 200.320C2, under both of those particular provisions, we're requesting that the board approve a non-competitive procurement of this body scanner. I've attached a resolution for you to adopt under North Carolina law. The elected board has to approve a non-competitive purchase of equipment that would normally have to be publicly bid. And that resolution is attached and gives you some detail about the features of this particular equipment that are desired by the Sheriff's Office. Also with us today is our Jail Administrator, Matt Brown. Matt has information he's put at your seats today, I believe, but Matt, if you'll come up for a second, I think Matt may also be able to address this particular unit that's manufactured by Tech 84, and why it is something, the features and flexibility that we desire, and ask you to forego competitive bidding in this process. So I'll defer to Matt.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning, sir.
I made a little hack in which we have, it's a brief synopsis of what Tech 84 does while doing the body scanners in our facility. I'll create a short PowerPoint. Body scanner enhances security by protecting hidden contraband, reducing the risk to staff and inmates. It's a non-invasive. So we have three search methods we do now. We have a pat-down, a strict search, and then metal detectors. On a regular basis, we get into occupations with detainees coming in or inmates, and everybody likes to be strict searched. This is a non-invasive, the body scanner, the Tech 84 interceptor, takes four seconds to do a complete scan of a person. And it also, this one interceptor model we have, made exclusively by Tech 84, also has thermal screening, so it records the body temperature and all that stuff, which prohibits the flus and colds and COVID stuff coming from the facility. These are some items that were actually, these photos, contraband that was actually taken from our facility. Roads, weapons, and other dangerous items coming and smoking in, we may choose creative methods to hide contraband. And remember, these folks in jail, they've gotten up at the top, and they come up with some creative ways. Like I said, we have pat-downs, strict searches, we can miss hidden item objects, and it happens half the time along the human, so human air. Metal detectors only can take metal, metallic items, and staff are exposed to risk, including physical searches. With the opioid pandemic going on with fentanyl and stuff, our staff has been exposed to, you know, just searching, folks coming in. So benefits to staff, minimize staff exposure, potential hazards, reduces confrontational searches, and manages a faster escape process. Like I said, it takes about four seconds to scan somebody, and that scan goes directly into our jail management system, our software. And it can be used, if any contraband's found on an inmate, it can be used for evidentiary value as well. Reduces claims of inappropriate searches, this is a legal liability protection, and provides documented scans for evidence, and ensures compliance of security best practices. So it uses a low-dose x-ray technology to detect hidden objects, scans within seconds, reduce your processing time, and identifies contraband on the inside or on the body itself. So the photos up there are actually what the Tech 84 interceptor body scanner looks like, and these are images that come from it. The good thing about this, one other reason we'd want, we would like to have this particular model, there's fifty-six counties within North Carolina that have this, this model. Over thirteen hundred, it's thirteen hundred and fifty-six body scanners have been sold since 2019 by this company across the country. Some of the county's surrounding counties, Nash County, Bramble, Edgecombe, Durham, Pitt County, they all have this model, which is a valuable resource to us. If we have some technical issues or need help, you know, comparing notes, it's just a, just a phone call away. Case studies, other facilities have seen reduced contraband incidents and improved inmate processing efficiency, and it's increased staff and inmate safety. A body scanner is a necessary tool for modern detention centers, it enhances security, efficiency, and legal protection. The investment pays off in the safety and operational improvements. The cost breakdown, the initial scanner, two hundred and seven thousand dollars, oh, I'm sorry, invested for everything. The scanner sells one hundred and thirty-nine thousand, three hundred, thirty-five hundred for shipping, twenty thousand for the thermal temperature scanner, and forty, forty-four thousand five hundred for five-year warranty. If we, we can purchase additional warranties for at least an extra cost of seventy-five hundred dollars per year. Also included in that cost is all the training, the sort of half-day training, in-person training, and anything that happens to the scanner, they'll, they'll help us out with it. And then we have some, some additional cost, the annual cost for inspections, registration with the Department of Health and Human Services, and the dosimeter badges which measure the amount of radiation exposed to the individual. Do you have any questions?
Okay, I want to thank you for your presentation. Commissioner Reddick?
Thank you for your, thank you for your informative presentation. One question I have is in regards to pacemakers and defibrillators, if an inmate comes in with that type of device, will it interfere with the functioning of it or cause adverse conditions?
The research that I have done on that is not interfering with it. It's just, it's like a regular x-ray machine at the, at the hospital. There's some, maybe some exceedingly certain factors that would be noted that we would search them. Typically, if somebody has pacemakers or that, we don't, we don't admit them into facilities. Our facility is not designed to maintain medical protection.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Brown, what happens to a person, following up to his question, what happens to a person like that, and if you don't admit him to your facility? Do you find a location for him?
Yes, sir. We'll find, we'll find another facility that's able to accept them and accommodate their medical needs.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from the Commissioners? Commissioner Barrett?
Just real quick, so if you talk to Nash and all them about the warranty, because I mean, that's, that's a pretty expensive warranty.
Yes.
So I mean, it's really good, I mean, it's a really, I hope at that price, we're getting a really good warranty.
Well, that's for, that's for five years. And it is, if anything, malfunctions on the instrument or the machine, they come in, they're repaired within a few days.
Okay, so they've had good success with the company as far as following up with...
I've had real good communication between Edgecombe and the law camp who, who had this, and they, they really enjoy it. The warranty for five years, it's a total of forty-four, fifty, or forty-four thousand five hundred, and that's just the spending. So we can give a couple of years of warranty, and then we purchased an extra five years. And we, we would need, because when we, the new facility that we constructed, this, this model is transformed, so we can move this model from our old facility into the new facility, and that warranty will cover any additional cost for that as well.
Okay, okay, we're going to do Commissioner Silver, then the Vice Chair, and then back over to Commissioner Reddick. Go ahead.
Matt, I noticed I seen that you got outside agencies had two people brought weapons in or whatever, got them access.
Yes, sir. That's in the back, I believe, the last page.
Just as a sidebar, as you call, so those agencies are putting us at risk if your guys in the column. Would you please have our sheriff have a conversation, because not only they could got us in trouble in jail, they could have got themselves killed before they got here.
Yes, sir.
So even though it's not necessarily about that, but it's a liability that's been brought to us. So thank you guys for finding those weapons. So thank you.
Okay, Vice Chair Davis?
I just had a question about the training that I saw. What does that include?
So they, the, the company brings in certified trainers, and they will train all of our detention staff, along with some of our officers. It's a two-and-a-half-day in-person training. They go through every movement boat on the list, and train us on how to read x-rays. And it's a, if we have any questions on the x-rays, we can send them through, and they'll help us decipher what we're actually looking at.
Finished. Okay, Commissioner Reddick?
As the Program Chair for Criminal Justice at the Community College, would you be open to me bringing students so they can also be exposed to the new technology and its usefulness in the county?
I'm always a helper education, so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Of course, I do want to acknowledge the Chief Deputy Neil Akok is back there as well. Thank you for being here, Chief.
I apologize. He's been training and rolling.
Right. And I don't, you know, I guess the last question that he asked Commissioner Reddick, and I know Mr. Brown did answer him, but I'm sure that the sheriff will be receptive to students coming looking at that, right?
Yeah, that'd be something we might check a little bit about when coming into the facility, because it's a different style of facility.
Okay. All right, so you have to check on that and get back. Okay. All right, thank you. Appreciate it. All right, where will the body scanner be available?
So once it, once it's part of first purchase, before it gets up and running, probably it'll be out in about four to six months.
Okay, the reason I ask that is, I can't imagine, smile at me, I know why she smiled, because she's been out there for a while now, you know? This was approved, I don't know how long ago, year and a half ago, two years ago?
At least two years. Not, not to any fault of anybody with the county. This is a congressional community project request through Congressman Davis, which was funded.
Yeah, and also too, you know, all due respect to Congressman Davis, Lord, we thank him for it, because, you know, he really went to bat for us, so we're not blaming him for this delay, you know? I just want to point out, this has been out there a long time, this is kind of why I asked you that question. Okay, any other questions or comments from the Commissioners? If not, I know our attorney has something he needs to probably say.
Just to, just to reiterate that the purpose today is to have you approve the non-competitive procurement of this body scanner. As we said, this is federal grant money. We have to be sure we're complying with all the federal grant rules, as well as state rules, and this is part of that process. But our main form is to demonstrate to you that this particular body scanner is only available from this source with these particular features that are, are, are desired. And with that being said, I would just ask that you adopt the resolution that's attached to your agenda package.
Okay, with that being said, can I get a motion?
So moved.
Okay, motion made by Vice Chair Davis, second by Commissioner Silver, and a further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Again, we do want to thank Congressman... Again, we do want to thank Congressman Don Davis for his hard work in helping us, you know, get this, you know, get this for Halifax Sheriff's Department, do want to thank him. And also to the county manager, she's gonna check to see whether or not we've already sent him a lot of thanks, if not, then she's gonna forward one to him as well. Okay, moving to the next item. Alright, next item, capital project ordinance for schematic design services, new Halifax County Detention Center, Turner Rollins.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and this, this item goes kind of hand in hand with the next agenda item that, that Mr. Everett will present concerning the contract with Mosley Architects regarding the detention center. But I don't know, maybe I just decided I wanted to go first for some reason, I don't really know why. You'll see what I mean when I get through. We have, are about to ask you to, to approve a contract with Mosley Architects to begin work on the design and other architectural services for the detention center. The first part of that work would be schematic design. As you know, we are making application now to USDA role development for perhaps a loan through USDA RD for the detention center project. That's gonna be several weeks, if not months, ongoing. And once we have our contract in place, which is ready to be signed, I want you to approve it, we'd like for Mosley to go ahead and begin the schematic design work rather than waiting until we've gotten all of the funding through USDA or whatever source it eventually is, in place. For that reason, I've presented to you a capital project ordinance for schematic design services on the new detention center, and we're requesting that you go ahead and appropriate from general fund the amount of five hundred and seventy-three thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars, which is that portion of Mosley's, Mosley's architectural services that deals with schematic design. The grant project ordinance also states that we anticipate that the loan proceeds we use to reimburse that back to general fund once those loan proceeds are in place. But this will allow us to go ahead and have Mosley begin the work on schematic design. We could not do that unless you had some funds appropriated for that expenditure ahead of time. Okay, that was a lot, any questions?
And this is a, this is the fee, we shouldn't expect any changes to it?
This is, this is the fee for schematic design, there are other fees clearly with Mosley, but yes, ma'am, this is.
Just for the design.
If, if it does change, it would be only because we changed something about our design request that caused, which caused Mosley to have to go back. But schematic design is typically fairly straightforward, it's usually design, design development, the next stage, where you get down to more detail and you may make changes that might cause Mosley to have to go back and change some design work. But typically schematic design is very straightforward, but it's something we want to go ahead and get a leg up on as we're moving along toward anticipating our financing.
Ms. Duncan?
The reason you see that specific amount in this project ordinance, that is what we expect to spend up to through June 30th for this fiscal year. So there will be more fees after that, Mr. Everett will go into that without stealing his thunder, this is just for schematic design. Schematic design is scheduled to take around three to four months, so that would take us through the end of this fiscal year, that's why you have that amount today.
And, and you know, I always forget to say that, but, but the technicality here is that Mary cannot sign a contract, or cannot pre audit a contract for any money we might spend in the current fiscal year unless the money's been appropriated, which is why we thought this would be sufficient, probably more than sufficient, to cover any expenditures in this fiscal year, and so we need her to be able to pre audit that contract for that purpose.
And it's a question about the, not about the amount, but just give me that process in general, I know they'll do, I guess, a rough draft and we'll come back, so how many times do we get to go back and forth before that final?
You mean with the final design of the facility?
Yeah.
It'll be several months, several months. There is going to be a lot of preliminary work about just not only where we can actually place the building and making sure it fits at our, at our spot down the street, you're probably looking at not breaking ground until this time next year. There, there's significant designs involved for a detention facility.
See, we're being real strategic about it, and that's, you know, that's really what we kind of want to do anyway, I think, next year. Commissioner Reddick?
As I have pointed out in previous meetings, I've been a huge advocate for the design including a day treatment program, so will that be included in the draft?
That, that is, and we talk about this all the time, and, and that is part of that whole process of schematic design, is the kind, what kinds of features and, and components do you want to have in the detention center? So yes, sir, and, and I expect also that we'll have meetings with the board and Mosley as well during this process. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, Turner Rollins, you finish?
Yes, sir, I just would ask the board to, to adopt the capital project ordinance.
Okay. What's your pleasure, colleagues?
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Webbs, is our second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Barrett, in the further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Okay.
Alright, moving to the next item, approval of the Mosley Architects contract for Halifax County Detention Center, we're here from our elections Assistant County Manager, Thomas Everett.
Hey, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, Board of Commissioners, County Manager, County Staff, that's my leading friends and family, good morning.
Alright.
I see you all. It's my pleasure to go over the financial breakdown for the Mosley contract services. The total cost is three million, nine hundred and twenty thousand dollars. The breakdown for that amount is on the chart labeled Article 11, compensation will be in the lab in 2025. So all the things that make up the breakdown, make up the breakdown for that compensation, like the attorney, Rollins and County Manager Denton stated, the breakdown for the schematic design is five hundred and seventy-two thousand, five hundred and seventy dollars, which is due within the fiscal year 2425. As stated, groundbreaking won't be until March 30th of that year. Are there any questions concerning further of this work?
The county cost for the schematic design is five hundred and seventy-three thousand, five hundred and seventy dollars for the fiscal year 2425, correct?
Yes, sir.
Alright, any questions or comments from the commissioners? Commissioner, Vice Chair Davis?
The construction documents, what does all that include?
Construction documents?
That's a pretty good price.
Materials, procedures.
I can, I can help, yeah, I can help with that too. Commissioner Davis, the construction documents are really the, as you can tell from the pricing, the, the bulk of the services that the architect does, this is what the contractor and the other folks who are involved in building the jail, this, these are all the technical detailed designs and documents that are used to actual build the facility. Schematic design, design development are all the ideas, but when you get someone to actually build things, they need to know where everything goes exactly, these are stacks and stacks and stacks of documents that are used in the building process, and they're, they're very elaborate, very detailed, and it's what the architect is ultimately responsible for having in place so that the contractor knows what break to put where.
Okay, any other questions, comments? Not, you, you finished or?
Yes, sir.
You finished? Okay, I think Ms. Denton got one thing that she wanted to add.
The only thing I would add, an AIA contract is by design very lengthy, very detailed, very wordy, we only included Section 11, which we thought would be of the most interest to you, which is the full breakdown. I have a copy of the full one, happy to share it, it's public record, but it's a lot of kind of architectural verbiage, if you will, but it does give a breakdown of the timing, which is why we're, we're saying we're looking at breaking ground, probably March to April next year. So it'll be a significant amount of time, there'll be a significant amount of input from the sheriff's office and the jail staff, as well as our own operations staff to get, get the facility designed to what will work well for the county. So this is the architectural contract, if we could get your approval on this today, we will cut Mosley loose and let them start that process, and they are, they're ready to go.
And if you want to make up the full thing, you can check with her, she has the whole hall of paperwork on it. Okay, um, okay, we're gonna need a motion in regards to Mr. Everett's report approval of the Mosley Architect contract, I believe that's what we need, right?
I move for approval of the Mosley Architect contract.
Okay, motion made by Vice Chair Davis is our second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Webb, in the further discussion, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, thank you, Mr. Everett.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Alright, um, let's work on a little bit longer before we take a break, you everybody alright?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Well, I mean, all is well in this board, and by all means, years of experience, we're gonna buy some other years too.
Chair's a mind of a woman.
Okay, item E, First Try-On Advisors Work Authorization Number Seven, Ms. Duncan? Our money lady?
Okay, thanks again. Alright, I'm here to request authorization for you guys to approve the First Try-On Work Authorization Number Seven. The actual contract is twenty-five thousand with a one percent incidentals, which is another thousand, so the total value of this contract is twenty-six thousand dollars, they will not invoice us until the completion of the project, but I need the funding available now in order for you to sign off on this and pre audit the contract. We work with First Try-On for quite a while now, and we have a good rapport with them. They were here, they presented earlier to you, group the objections, and this is very spunky options. And it's just a formality if you guys will authorize this and we proceed with the next step in our detention center.
Okay, Turner Rollins?
One thing I wanted to, to maybe comment on is that this particular action today is to just authorize work order number seven under our master agreement with First Try-On. Unlike, unlike, I'll say this, unlike, and I know this is back and forth, I apologize for that, but unlike the contract with Mosley, which we want work to start right away, First Try-On will start work right away as well, however, they will not invoice us for the work until our loan closes with USDA or whoever it is, I keep saying whoever because we don't really know yet, we're in application with USDA. But until we get to the point that we've actually closed our financing, we won't get an invoice from First Try-On. I don't know if that's gonna be before July 1st or not, I, I really don't know. So I'm not sure whether we're going to, and run into a problem with pre audit or not. Probably not, so I don't think we're gonna ask you to actually appropriate any funds ahead of time for this, when we're just to conclude this in cost of the project. But I think we are able to go ahead and execute a contract for this work order. David's worked very closely with us in other financings and is doing a very good job with this one, particularly with the extra work that's involved with the USDA application. So if we could just have you authorize work order number seven, we can move forward with that and keep on this detention center project.
Ms. Duncan, anything else you want to say?
So that's all.
And of course, the comments from the commissioners? If not, can I get a motion for your approval in regards to authorization, the county manager to sign work order number seven, with First Try-On for detention center loan service? So moved. Motion made by Commissioner Silver, is our second?
Second.
Seconded by Vice Chair Davis, in the further discussion, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, Ms. Duncan, appreciate you as well. Alright, next item, amended grant project ordinance, Halifax County, 2022, Christina Wells.
Good morning.
How are working, Devin County?
Good morning. Thanks. Alright, well, we've talked about the body scanner and about the receipt of federal funds, both federal funds and state funds, sometimes takes quite a while to evolve this project, just because there are a lot of hoops to jump through, this would be another one of those, but it's gonna be worth it in the end, and we're getting very close. So what we have is an amendment to our original grant project ordinance for the 2022 CDBG Neighborhood Revitalization Project. If you will remember, I believe we've come to you before, I can't remember, was it this board or the previous board, but I think it was this board, we came to you before about sole source for lead-based paint and radon mitigation for this project, which is taking place in the Lincoln Heights community. So the original grant was for the construction of a new community center for that, that area, which is very exciting, as well as the rehabilitation of two homes. So we're very excited to proceed with that project. And I do have Mike Scott here today, he is our grant administrator for this, this grant fund, and if you have any specific questions related to the project and how it's evolved, he's here to, to back me up and answer anything that you may have. But today, we're coming to you with a simple request. In 2022, the board approved the original grant project ordinance, which allocates the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars and how we're gonna spend that, which is basically on those three areas, the construction of the community center, the rehab of the homes, and grant administration. The only thing that we changed with the attached amended grant project ordinance was the change to Section 5, and that simply allows for the county manager and any other appropriate officials that she may deem necessary to go through the process, shall we say, to solicit bids, procure contractors, negotiate, execute and deliver contracts, so that we don't have to come back before the board every time we need to, to make a move with this project, expedite things, and all the way for board meetings, so extremely important. But that is really, you can see the attached grant project ordinance with the breakdown, none of that changed, as I said, the only thing that Mr. Rollins changed for us was the ability for the county manager and the rest of staff to take these actions. So with that, I just ask for your approval of the amended grant project ordinance for our CDBG here, yes, ma'am?
So, has any of the groundwork started yet?
Yeah.
The remodeling?
Mike, you wanna come over here, Tony? That's just how I like having it up here.
Morning, Mr. Scott, thanks for being here.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Always a pleasure, sir. Commissioner, the, the, there's not been any groundbreaking, but we are, the county has done procurement for the architect for that project, and that architect has been approved and the contract is, is underway. The, a part of what this particular amendment does address is the architect will actually be hired by Lincoln Heights Community Center.
Okay.
They're the nonprofit, they're the hunger of the project, as far as the, the actual community center's concerned. The county will actually enter into an administrative agreement with the, with the nonprofit and provide funds for the architectural services. The actual construction of the project will be accommodation of funds that the community center received from a state grant aid through the help of Representative Ray at the time, and also through a congressional appropriation with the government of Congressman Davis. So when you, when you start meanling state money, federal money from two sources, because the CDBG is state money, and the nine hundred and fifty thousand that Congressman Davis got is USDA money, then you really, you know, just kind of hullbowl because they're not getting really money. But anyway, we've, we've gone through all those, those exercises now, the architect is ready to, in fact, they've started some of their preliminary work, and so we're, and also the county has, has hired a lead-based paint contractor to do the work on the two residences that have to be tested prior to any work being done on their units. on the two residences that have to be vested prior to any work being done of their units. So we're actually going to start actually doing some real work.
Okay.
So thank you.
Thank you.
That question is one we get a lot.
Turner Rollins?
Yes, sir. Just to make it more confusing, if you look at the grant project ordinance, you'll see we've got a breakdown of the $750,000. And the first part, neighborhood facilities, that is our contribution to the Lincoln Heights Community Center. In that situation, we're actually going to be entering into a subrecipient grant agreement with Lincoln Heights, Lincoln Heights Community Center. That is actually not our project. We're not building that. They are, and they're building it with other grant money that Mike mentioned, but we are contributing to that, to them as a subrecipient. So that's the administrative agreement he was referring to. The other, the $300,000 is the rehab assistance. Actually, it's work we are doing, the lead remediation and some other things that Mike referred to. So just to avoid confusion, there are different things being done with the CDBG funds that we have available, most of it being the $375,000 as a subrecipient to Lincoln Heights. And again, we just wanted to make it much more efficient with administering this grant money to allow the county manager to enter into these contracts and not have to come back to you every time we want to, you know, approve a contract or something to get these things moving along. So I hope that was helpful.
Okay. All right. Any questions or comments from the commissioners? Have you all finished? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Scott and our deputy manager. At this time, we're going to ask for a motion in regards to the approved, the amended grant project ordinance, Halifax County, CDBG 2020, for the Neighborhood Revitalization Project. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Okay. Motion made by Vice Chair Davis is our second. Second by Commissioner Reddick. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you all so much. And also do want to, again, thank Congressman Donna Davis, who worked hard on this, and also the North Carolina General Assembly. Former Representative Ray had a lot to do with this as well. Just before Ms. Wells moves on to the next item, I do want to recognize our DSS director. She's been sitting out there very patiently and observing, and thank you, Felicia Exum, for all that you do and your staff as well.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll move to the next item, item G, interlocal agreement resolution for the animal control in the town of Wildon. Ms. Wells, you still up?
Yes, sir. So I come to you again to request that you approve a resolution allowing us to enter into an interlocal agreement to provide animal control services for the town of Wildon. As you'll see in the supporting information on the agenda I made on, the county entered into interlocal agreements for the provision of animal protection and control services with both the towns of Halifax and Scotland Neck in 2023. We did at that time offer it to the other municipalities, and for whatever reason, at the time, we only had the two municipalities express interest. But recently, the town of Wildon came back to us and said, you know, in thinking about it, we think this is the best way for us to provide this service to our citizens is to contract with the county. So they will actually, I can't remember if they meet during the day or in the evening now.
They're meeting today. I don't know what time.
I know it's today.
Well...
So they will actually meet today as well. But our animal control director, Robert Richardson, has been on top to the board, has been in close contact with both their town administrator, Connor Winston, and their police chief, Chris Davis. And we think we have reached a nice agreement for the county to help provide these services. As you will see, what is required is that the town has to rescind their own animal control ordinance and adopt the county's ordinance so that we're being consistent in applying the same ordinance across the board for enforcement. So that will happen prior to entering the agreement. So what we have is the resolution authorizing the interlocal agreement regarding enforcement of the county ordinance within the town, as well as a attached copy of the interlocal agreement. And in order to provide this service, just as an FYI, each of the towns contributes to the cost of our personnel on a per capita basis, the way we felt that was the most fair. The more people you have, in our likelihood, the more pets and animals there are to control. So that was the best way for us to do it. We typically invoice that very on an annual basis, is that correct, for our current towns of Halifax and Scotland Neck? Since the town of Wildon is coming in, kind of at a different point in the year, we'll prorate their amount through the end of June 30. And then since we'll have some salary adjustments happening July 1, we'll once again revisit those amounts using the same per capita percentage and then invoice them for the new amount that they will contribute to provide services. Do I have any questions? Yes?
Will a notice go out to the residents of Wildon so they are aware of the change?
I, you know, that would certainly be the responsibility of the town administrator, but I can certainly imagine that he would communicate that change absolutely.
Thank you.
And we can certainly suggest that as well.
Okay. Anyone else?
Do you?
Okay. Mr. Brown, it's been Ms. Davis.
Go ahead.
I don't know. I think we're just back in the recurring theme here. I don't, I don't know. So who pays? Where does the money for animal control come from? Does it come out of general fund? Is that where it's paid?
Animal control is completely county funded.
Out of the general fund?
Yes, sir.
From property tax?
Yes, sir.
Correct.
Yes. I know where you're going. Go ahead.
So to be clear, I want to be clear what this board is doing. I mean, we're asking county taxpayers in Wildon and Scotland Neck already pay for animal, their taxes already go pay for animal control, right? Is that not right?
Do you want this one?
Do you really think I would do this?
Are you ready for this, or you want me to do it?
You got it. You got this.
Go ahead. I'll finish your question. I'm sorry.
I know where you're going.
I mean, I just...
Can I? May I?
So someone lives on True Blood Road, and somebody lives on Elm Street in Wildon, they're paying the same property tax rate, right?
County property tax, yes.
Okay.
But if you live in the town of Wildon, you're paying an additional municipal tax.
Correct.
By virtue of living in a town, you are ideally paying for additional services, an additional layer of services. For example, the sheriff's office has jurisdiction all over the county, but the town of Wildon budgets and pays for its own police department. If somebody on Washington Street calls 911, the town of Wildon Police Department is expected to respond to that address for the call. You're paying for that extra layer of service. It's no different from 911 or law enforcement.
I understand, but are we going to be providing the people with the count of Wildon anything extra? Or are we providing them with the same thing we're providing every other resident in the county?
Well, if I may...
Go ahead.
When we took on the additional responsibility to municipalities, we did hire an additional animal control officer. So we took on additional...
Right. I understand, but we're going back to the age-old question of, yes, the city taxpayers have, over the years, you know, provided tax dollars for any service that the county didn't have to provide. My question is, let's just go back to the same comparison. Somebody lives on True Blood Road, and somebody lives on Elm Street in Wildon, would they be getting any service different from Halifax County animal control?
They'll get the same level of response, but because the town cannot provide that service, they're contracting with the town, with the county, excuse me. Here's where it comes down to, and you're probably going to see more of this because it is increasingly difficult to hire qualified staff to provide these services. And so the towns are being forced to address it in some way, and we are their option. I don't know of a better way to explain that.
Well, I understand that. My concern is, are we treating county residents who are county taxpayers like everybody else different because they live in a city?
Do you have anything further that maybe I'm not explaining well?
Okay. Here's where you can go if you keep going with that position. You know, at some point, you, as a board, may decide, to the extent you can decide to do this, and I'll get to that in just a moment, you might decide that Halifax County is going to provide animal control services throughout the entire county, whether it's an incorporated municipality or not. It's going to be Halifax County that's going to do animal control. The problem with that is you don't have the authority to have an ordinance that applies in the town of Wildon or in the city of Bonneville or in the town of Littleton. You don't have authority to enact an ordinance that is truly countywide if you're talking about a municipality. Now, this is part of the reasons why we, what has to happen is the town of Wildon has to decide, we're going to ask that the county's ordinance apply in the town of Wildon. That's the first thing that has to happen. The approach here has been that the town has traditionally provided animal control services. They no longer can find or do that. And you're going to see the same thing with building inspection services. All this is coming, all this is coming down the pipe, that, you know, all these different things that towns normally used to be able to do, they can't do any longer. So here, by agreement, the town has said, we'll agree to help on a prorated share on a capital, per capita basis, cover the cost of animal control in the town of Wildon and Scotland Neck and Halifax by paying some portion of what it costs to provide those services in our town. I understand your argument, and I get, you know, your point about someone living just inside and just outside of the town of Wildon, getting the same animal control services. But if you're living in a town, and the town decides it wants to provide those services and the town board wants to do that, then they have a right to ask the county to do that and pay for the county to do that. If the town decided it did not want to provide animal control services, there just wouldn't be animal control services in the town of Wildon because we don't have authority to go into the town of Wildon and provide animal control services. We couldn't, we can't, you might decide you want to do that, but you can't do that without the town saying you can come in our town and enforce county ordinances in the town. So that's the give and take that's going on here. You know, and it's, this isn't a new argument. This isn't a new issue. It's just that we're limited as a county in what we can do in any given municipality in the county. We can't just come in and roughshod and say, well, it's going to be the county's ordinance, not your ordinance. Or we're going to have our animal control folks come in and enforce, you know, the leash laws or whatever, but we can't do that. We have to be invited to do that. And part of that, you know, is the town saying, we want you to do it for us. Here's what we're willing to pay under an interlocal agreement to do that.
Okay.
I mean, does that go back to all counties? Certainly. So I guess, so if you live in a city, and let's say my city's not going to provide any service, whatever, whether it's, let's say, police department, we're not going to provide any police service in my municipality, the sheriff's department is going to provide service on a same basis, we're not asking for any afterlaid. We're asking for the same protection you give every other county person, county taxpayer.
Here's the difference with law enforcement, okay? Unlike animal control, you have animal control ordinances, county ordinance in the town. Unlike law enforcement, if the, Lord don't tell them not to do this, but if the city of Bonneville is decided tomorrow, they were no longer going to have a police department. They, you know, they could, they could do that, and that would mean by common law, and there's some case law on this, the sheriff's office would have to pick up law enforcement in the city of Bonneville.
Well, I'm not trying to go down that road. I'm trying to stick on, so like, like you said, building inspections. I mean...
Yep.
You have something like municipalities remaining that's...
That's something they're required to provide by law.
With dog catchers on, or animal controls on.
No.
But when you're asking your citizens to pay that as conditional municipal tax, it's a service that you're able to provide, like solid waste or partisan recreation?
But also, too, Commissioner Barrett, I'm going to make it a little bit more simple, but, you know, kind of piggybacking on what he said, he did from a legal point, I'm going from a, from a layman's view. You know, if you look at Robert Richardson out there, if he's got four people who's working for him, and he had all these other municipalities in, even if they approved, you know, when they approved them to come in, you know, he can't operate the same way with those four people, you know, bringing in those additional towns like he could, you know? I mean, that's a simple way to look at it, and he just can't do it. I mean, it's impossible for him to maintain that level unless someone gets charged on him, you know? You have to, I mean, you have to, you know, charge someone in order to do that.
And I understand that. I understand where we're going here. I think we just need to be sure we're, be sure we understand what we're doing, and in some way, we're charging the people of Wildon more for animal control service than we are a regular taxpayer that doesn't live in a municipality. Because he's paying taxes twice for it. He's paying his county taxes, which pay for the animal control department that we have now, just like every other county taxpayer. And then he's paying a city tax that a portion of that will be taken to pay the same amount of control person that the rest of the county gives.
If I may, just for example, in this instance, since Wildon already had at least animal control on a part-time basis through their police department, so what they have considered, their board, is that they will actually be saving money by contracting that service with the county.
I agree they are. They're not making that argument. I just want to be, I just want to point out what we are doing, what we, what is done.
Yeah. You make a good point, but also what Christine said, many of them are doing that, too. They're trying to save money, too. This is the way they can save.
Commissioner Barrett, just from my point of view, I don't live in, I live in the county, I don't live in a municipality, but at some point, we have looked at trying to incorporate our city. And those are just some of the extra things you will have to do if you want to do a, if you want to be incorporated as a municipality or as a city, you're going to have those extra charges. And so that's what people have to consider, yeah, I'm going to have to pay some extra taxes to, for that.
That often makes the difference in people's choices of living in the county versus the municipality, is just that, those extra services.
And Commissioner Davis probably made the best point by saying that, really.
She did.
I mean, really, because she's right about incorporation. Okay, but Commissioner Barrett, your point is well taken. All right. Anyone else? I know Commissioner Reddick had your hand up.
I just wanted to add that Commissioner Silver and I just returned from the National Association of Counties conference, and this was a hot topic at that conference. And we have to do a better job as leaders to groom our young people to become, you know, the builders and the inspectors and the electricians, the county attorneys and the town attorneys in these municipalities, because I'm watching, again, my students at the community college and the early colleges state in their papers and presentations, I want to get away from here as soon as possible, as far as possible. And we can do a better job of working with the schools, other stakeholders and others to show them that there is an opportunity here for them to not only establish themselves professionally, but also families, they can have houses, et cetera. And we can't do that if we're not going to collaborate effectively.
Okay. All right. Anyone else? Good discussion, y'all. It really is. I mean, great discussion.
It won't be the last time we have.
Oh, no. Oh, no. Not last time at all. We've gone down this road many times. But it's a good discussion. You need to bring up those points. And different views, it's fine to have different views about things, nothing wrong with that. That's good, healthy discussion. Okay. At this time, we need to go back to, you know, unless you have some more discussion, we're looking at the adoption of the resolution authorizing the interlocal agreement between Halifax County and the town of Wildon regarding the enforcement of Halifax County animal protection and control ordinance within the town. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
All right. Motion made by Commissioner Silver there, second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Webb in a further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Madam Pluck, let me reflect that that's unanimous. Ms. Wells, I hate to do this to you, but we, yeah, we need to take about a 10-minute break. Let's look at the clock at about, let's come back about 12 after 11. 12 after 11.
[laughter]
12 after 11.
[laughing][562.29]
Okay, we're going to hear from Ms. Wales at this time. Item H under the Home Investment Partnership Revised Resolution and Grant Project Ordinance.
Yes, sir. Good morning.
Good morning again.
So, this is a long one. I typically don't place a dissertation on supporting information, but this project is another one of those large projects with federal dollars. So it requires a little bit of backstory, because I think this might be the first time that you guys have heard about it. So.
We just started.
Way back in 2021, once upon a time in 2021. State and Boys Creative Union Foundation, who works with a number of us in Eastern North Carolina, especially, approached ECU about creating a collaborative to address common issues and pursue funding opportunities collectively instead of all these individual requests. So what was born out of that was the identification, of course, of affordable housing as a very common issue, especially in Eastern North Carolina. And the five-county Chauanoke area housing consortium was born. The five counties were selected by being connected to CADA, the Chauanoke Area Development Association, as our CHODO, which is a community housing development organization. I've got some acronyms for you, because you probably have your Applewood suit for today. Mine's blunt. So I will say, after a long year of work, you can't imagine the amount of work that went into creating a consortium whereby not only all five counties, but 38 of 39 municipalities contained there, and we only had one municipality choose not to sign on, decided to form this consortium in order to receive home project funding through HUD. And the reason that we had to form the consortium is that alone, no one county nor municipality could possibly qualify for this kind of funding. So that was the reason for the consortium. Okay, long story, long story short. We were asked, Halifax County was, to serve as the lead entity for the consortium. What that means is that we're really in charge of administering the funding. So with our well-qualified finance staff, and what I hope is our well-qualified county management staff and our legal team, we have been serving as the lead entity, which meant we were the ones who really went out and talked people into the concept of the consortium life and development. Okay, so there we go. So we formed in 2022. And finally, in 2023, we were officially approved by HUD to receive funding. So that meant that we had to hire a consultant. We hired a great consultant out of South Carolina who was very familiar with this type of funding, Civitas. And they produced two products for us. They met with everyone in the five-county area, so they had meetings in each county. They talked to constituents and stakeholders that our lead work for HUD. And they identified priorities. And they captured those in two products. One was a consolidated plan, which is good for five years. It kind of talks about the overarching strategy that we would like to do with our home funding. And they also developed a first annual action plan. Okay, those were accepted by HUD, and we were approved for funding in the amount of $854,162. Exciting. But of course, you all will know that that amount of money is great. It'll go very far throughout the five counties, but it's a wonderful thing. The good thing is, if we keep going, this funding is pretty much guaranteed to occur every year. We might always be at the same funding amount, as you will see. Okay, so once the first year of funding was awarded, we then selected the Upper Coastal Plain Council of Governments to serve as our grant administrator, because they do a lot of work with Halifax and more county counties and are very familiar with projects related to affordable housing and like, CDG mostly. But it's very similar to home and HUD. Okay, so over the past year, we have worked directly with them because we had to develop policies and procedures for the consortium, how it was going to function as an entity. And we also crafted the second annual action plan for fiscal year 2024. So we were also notified that we received fiscal year 2024 funding in the amount of $632,179. So our most recent effort is that we have released or notified people of the availability of funding applications whereby affordable housing projects can be submitted by area nonprofits, local governments, developers, et cetera, for these funds. So now, in order to be able to spend these funds, as you guys know, we need to put those funds in the form of a grant project ordinance. So we have two things before you today. One is a revised resolution authorizing certain county officials to execute documents on behalf of the Home Investment Partnership Program. And that was simply because we had some stacking changes since our original resolution was passed. And then the second piece is that we would like you to adopt the Home Investment Partnership Program Grant Project Ordinance. And I thank County Attorney Rollins for working with me on both of these documents and making them legal, because that is just what he does. So the resolution, as you will see in your attachments, the first whereas clause just states when the consortium was formed and who's involved. It identifies us as the lead entity. And it talks about our entering into a joint wafer tube. And then our first resolution was passed in February 20th, 2023. And then the only change here is that we have changed the identification of the staff members at the bottom of the page to be the county manager, myself, and Mary Duncan as the county finance director. And that's just a sign off on documents related to the home consortium. Because as lead entity, we are a piece of, a very important piece of this wheel, but we are not the only county. We're five counties and 38 municipalities. So we're really just acting in good faith on behalf of this group. Okay? So that's the delegation authority via that resolution. And then you'll see the lovely grant project ordinance that goes through much of the same language. And a key piece is on the second page under sections three and four. You'll see the identification of our home funds for fiscal year 23 and our home funds for fiscal year 24. And the reason I say this is pretty cut and dry is because the way these funds are allocated percentage-wise is identified in the approved annual action plan from HUD. So those two things must match, so there's not wiggle room for discussion or reallocation unless we were to get approval from HUD and find that we need to reallocate those funds in a different proportion. And then we'd have to amend our annual action plan and thus amend the grant project ordinance. Is that clear as mud for everyone? So you will see the percentage breakdown is as follows for the total amount. We do have 10% for administration, so that amount will go to the Upper Coastal Plain Council of Governments for helping us administer these funds. We have 15% for CHODO activities. Again, the CHODO had to go through a selection process, and that process selected CADA as our CHODO, our community housing development organization. And they do such things as home buying classes and educating you on how to be a good home buyer and rental assistance and other projects. So they can submit a proposal to us, and they will automatically, that's a must off the top, you must allocate 15% of your funds every year to a CHODO. So that's an act. Then collectively, the consortium decided that they would add an additional 5% that can go to CHODO operating expenses. Because CADA is a nonprofit organization, of course, like most nonprofit organizations, any additional funding to help administer funds that will come to them through HUD requires a bit more work. So the activities are projects, the operating expenses are more for administration-related costs. So that's an additional 5%. And then the last three categories are affordable housing development. We would love to see brand-new or rehabilitated affordable housing developments throughout these five counties. The rising tide raises all ships. If you get it in one, hopefully more will come in up. And we can hopefully find some developers who will want to come and do that for us. We also want purchase assistance programs, which again would be that down payment assistance for people. And then finally, we would like to have owner-occupied housing rehabilitation, which is similar to what we just previously discussed with CDG in the Lincoln Heights community, where you would take a home that needs some work, that is owned by the homeowner, and be able to set it up with important renovations. Okay, so that's the breakdown of the funding, as I said, as identified in the annual action. Phew, I know that was a lot. That's the introduction to a major program, and that's a lot of information. So I'm happy to take any questions, but the tasks before you are just the two, one to approve the amended resolution, and the other two of the grant number.
Okay, Commissioner Davis?
I understand the process. Just a question for curiosity, and I use one of my husband's terms. So is this, the funding just provided for stick-built houses or modules or double, no, double?
For renovation or construction for both?
For both categories.
I don't recall there being limitations on, I don't know if it would go for mobile homes, but modular and stick-built, yes, for both local ordinance amounts. Good question.
Okay, any other questions or comments?
I'd like to comment.
Yes, sir.
Just so, and it's ironic that you spend all this time on this front-end part, but I'm going to step on a limb here and say, probably after today, you aren't going to personally hear much about this in your meetings anymore. There's a consortium board that actually makes this particular budget breakdown, and consortium activities are pretty much with that board, with the county. And then after this resolution today, the county manager, assistant county manager, finance director, doing the behind-the-scenes stuff, it's really not that much for this board to do after we get these things from you today. We will report back to you about the activities as we will report to every county and municipality. But that was a lot today. Appreciate your patience in listening to it. It's a very complicated program, but we worked hard to put it together. And now we're really about to start doing the real groundwork.
I guess I should know this, but I don't. How is the consortium board made up?
So that's a very good point, and that's a very specific point made by HUD. The elected officials may be on the board to make decisions, so it must be staffed. So we currently have, and unfortunately, we've had some staffing changes in some of our other counties. So we're kind of in a rebuilding stage to see who's going first. But you have a representative from each of the five counties, which must be a staff person. And we also went to our municipalities and asked them, you know, we couldn't have 38 municipalities on the board. So there's an advisory, and then there's a decision-making. So on the decision-making, you'll have one municipal representative from each county. And for us, right now, it's Conner Winston from the town of Willow. Again, he must be staffed.
Okay, thank you. You explained that so well. I don't think, Christina, you know, and I don't know exactly how to ask it except for to ask it. Like under the CHDO activities, 15%, and the O one operating, 5%, how do we know that we're doing what we've asked them to do?
Because we have to vet it. And that's a lot of what the reasoning behind hiring or contracting with the Upper Coastal Plain Council of Governments is, is that there's a lot of behind-the-scenes paperwork, as you can imagine, to make sure that you're doing what you say you're going to do. So right now, we're going out for funding proposals. They'll submit a proposal, they'll first be vetted internally. They will then, and then if they qualify, you know, they can check all the boxes. Then they'll first be presented to the consortium board. We will decide on the projects. Then we have to get those projects approved by HUD, loaded up into this wonderful federal system called IEDS. And then we have to draw down funds in order to pay for these projects to be executed.
Okay.
So your question about the CHODO, about CADA, is that they will, you know, go through the same process. We'll get them into a funding agreement with CADA, and we will be checking on them, and they will have to report. But the good thing about CADA is they've been in this affordable housing business for years. And their wonderful previous director, Sally Surphus, has been an intimate part of this whole consortium process. I say that they have wonderful staff, but Sally is just an affordable housing icon with more than 38 years of experience. So she's been wonderful to work with. But they're very much clear-vetting and reporting.
Even after retirement, she's still a mom?
She sure is.
Okay, all right, we're good.
We'll call her CADA emeritus.
Okay, all right. Thank you for answering my questions. Any other questions from any other commissioners? All right, if not, what's before us is two items like Ms. Wales said. One is the approval of a revised resolution authorizing certain county officials to execute documents for the Home Investment Partnership Program. That's one motion.
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Wales. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Barrett. In the further discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, the second one is, is the adopt the Home Investment Partnership Program Grant Project Ordinance. Okay, motion made by Commissioner Reddick. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Webb. In the further discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay.
Thank you so much.
Job well done. Thank you. All right, at this time, we're going to move to board appointments. Madam Clerk, make sure I don't skip over any, please. You're going to help me with that. Okay, the first one is the Alcohol Beverage Control Board. Just so you know, commissioners, I have spoken to Terry Campbell. I've had a conversation about him, and he just said that he would like to be for future consideration for that board. And based on that, I will certainly make a motion that we fill it with Nancy Sandoval.
He said he wanted to be removed?
No, he said that he wanted to be considered for future consideration for the board, not now.
Oh.
I'll second. You made the motion.
Mm-hmm, I made the motion, okay. Motion made by Commissioner Bryant, second by Commissioner Barrett. In the further discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Halifax County Council on Aging received nominations to appoint Shirley Johnson to fill an unexpired term of... Jessica, okay. MacMillan. All right, can I get a motion for that?
So moved.
Okay, motion made by Vice Chair Davis. Do you want a second, Commissioner Barrett?
I'll second.
Okay, second by Commissioner Barrett. In the further discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, Halifax County Human Relations Committee received nominations to reappoint Stephanie Crater, Stephen Green, and Jessica McMillan.
So moved.
Motion by Vice Chair Davis is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Silver. In the further discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, received nominations to appoint Jennifer Fields to fill the vacant position for Patricia Peel. I'll second it. Okay, motion made by Commissioner Reddick, second by Commissioner Bryant. In the further discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign? Okay. Halifax Parks and Recreation Advisory Board received nominations to appoint Paul Nicholson to fill the unexpired term of Kayla Taylor. Motion made by Commissioner Barrett is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Davis. In the further discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, that's the council you said on, Commissioner Reddick, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, received nomination to appoint replacement for Ella Burnett. You know, we'll hold that open. And Madam Clerk, is there a specific position tied to Ms. Burnett, or is she at large? Do you know? Okay, all right, so we just need to keep that in mind going forward, you know? That's an important, well, all the boards and commissions that we appoint are important, but Juvenile Crime Prevention Council is really, really important. So we need to keep that in mind going forward. If you know of someone that you think may be, you know, good to sit on that board, just talk with Madam Clerk about it, okay, to see what the qualifications are. All right, anyone else? I think they're sitting. Okay. All right, we're here for our Economic Development Director, Ms. Scott.
Good morning.
Good morning.
It was a pretty good day, so I don't feel like I'm that big of a rush. Everybody recognize that Pittsburgh was on? It's really kind of an interesting facility, and we'll get it. It looks like something that all be along the coast or the state, or maybe along the river. Anyway, everybody remembers that Sir Richard, he was the liaison for the Economic Development Board for the New Jersey, former chairman Frank Amen, who passed away, so our board has to respect him. Our economic leaders, we don't have new employment figures. We don't have that till the end of the week. But we do have our building permits, we have some of January, and they were at $2.7 million compared to $5.9 million a year ago in January. And then our retail sales were up just over $64 million, and that compared to $54.9 million in 2023. So we ended up, 2024, with our retail sold about $200,000 more than the year previous. So we'll be doing a year-end recap at your next meeting. You know that we have all these last figures together, so that'll be good for you all to look at. A lot of things going on. We know how important the timber industry is and the wood industry is in Halifax County. There've been some executive orders that have really put the attention on the timber industry, whether it be lumber, paper, biodealing, other problems. Maybe that's some of the forests and taken away some of the environmental regulations related to harvesting timber. So all of that is moving forward, which should have a positive impact on the U.S. timber industry. The Airport Authority, you met some of the members here today. Adam Reed, who is the mill manager for the Renner Valley Mumber Facility. Really glad that he stepped up and agreed to be a part of the Airport Authority. They used our airport. It was one of the considerations that company made in choosing Halifax County as our airport facility. And then you all recognize Golden Leans last month, which we really appreciate. And those of you that could attend the Halifax Gardens luncheon in February, really a great turnout. We had over 60 people attend. Chris Chung, who's the president of the Economic Development Partnership, was a keynote speaker. He really gave that state economic development perspective and about what the initiatives are, what the state has, what the local communities that they serve. And I think one thing that was loud and clear, we're doing our jobs well with that state perspective. And those of you that could attend the Roseburg luncheon tour in February, it's a great tour. That is a large, huge facility, so really out to see that $230 million investment. In fact, I think we saw every piece of it. But it's, you know, cool to be ahead and really proud of that facility in Halifax County. Last week, I attended the Economic Development Association Spring Conference. Chris Chung, who is the president of the Economic Development Partnership, was one of the speakers, along with Secretary of Commerce Lee Billy, who's in Eastern North Carolina, ally of ours. Governor Stein was a luncheon speaker. Lots of good information, lots of networking. Secretary Billy and I made a date for him to come to Halifax County in May. So we'll be training in the event that if we can get him here and into our communities, we'll all be here. One of our board members for the Economic Development Commission working code. She was recognized by Halifax Community College as an African-American hero. And she serves the Economic Development Commission very well. And she's really dedicated to improving the lives of children and families in North Carolina. She serves the Economic Development Commission and the Plainwood. So really, please nominate her for this luncheon. Montia, in Halifax County, I think there was an event in Infield, and then there was a home in Halifax. It was a very nice, media asset of what was in place in 1824. My history associated with that. Our Golden Lake Shell Building Program, we're still working with Golden Lake to get through those next couple of steps to move forward. We all had, we have a project that's also looking at this piece of property. And so we are going to be having further discussions on that. And hopefully by your next meeting, have a decision on what we will do in moving forward with this project. Our select site, I mentioned to you, involves the last name, we received a grant from the state for $88,000 for some additional utilities. We're waiting for that grant agreement. Should be forthcoming this month, hopefully, get started on that. And then we have a lot of partners, a lot of allies in economic development. One of those is Electric Cooperatives at the state level. And they're always looking at ways to help us market our properties across the state. And they came up with this unique marketing tool that goes on to be called Scorecards. And so at Timecard this week, they, last week, they presented those scorecards to site selection consultants that were there. And it gave an opportunity for working at our sites, which there's more than one cooperative ready site, but we are definitely one of those, and one of the few that is also an in-state select site. And we've also been requested by CSX to submit qualifications for the CSX select site designation. That's due this week, in fact, that's next finish month. I was working here this morning, so that's behind me. And I think one thing that was loud and clear, we're doing our jobs well with the state perspective. And those of you that could attend the Roseburg luncheon tour in February, it's a great tour. Whoa, that is a large, huge facility, so really out to see that $230 million investment. In fact, I think we saw every piece of it. But it's, you know, cool being had and really proud of that facility in Halifax County. Last week, I attended the Economic Development Association Spring Conference. Chris Chung, who is the president of the Economic Development Partnership, was one of the speakers along with Secretary Commerce Lee Billy, who's in Eastern Carolina, ally of ours. Governor Stein was a luncheon speaker. Lots of good information, lots of networking, and Secretary Billy and I made a date for him to come to Halifax County in May. So we'll be trying in the event that if we can get him here and into our communities, we'll all be here. One of our board members for the Economic Development Commission working code, she was recognized by Halifax Community College as an African-American hero. And she serves the Economic Development Commission very well. And she's really dedicated to improving the lives of children and families in North Carolina. She serves the Economic Development Commission and the planning board, so really please nominate her for this luncheon. Montia, she was in Halifax County, and there was an event in infield, and then there was a home in Halifax. It was a very nice, media accent of what's in place in 1824. My history associated with that. Our Goldenlees Shell Building Program, we're still working with Goldenlees to get through those next couple of steps to move forward. We all had, we have a project that's also looking at this piece of property, and so we are going to be having further discussions on that. Certainly by your next meeting of a decision on what we will do in moving forward with this project. Our select site, I mentioned to you, involves the last name, we received a grant from the state for $88,000 for some additional utilities. We're waiting for that grant agreement, should be forthcoming this month, hopefully, get started on that. And then we have a lot of partners, a lot of allies in economic development. One of those is Electric Cooperatives at the state level, and they're always looking at ways to help us market our properties across the state. And they came up with this unique, um, marketing tool that goes on to be called Scorecards. And so at time course this week, they, last week, they presented those scorecards to site selection consultants that were there. And it gave an opportunity for working at our sites, which there's more than one cooperative ready site, but we are definitely one of those. And one of the few that is also an in-state select site. And we've also been requested by CSX to submit qualifications for the CSX select site designation. That's due this week, in fact, that's not finished while I was working here this morning, so let it happen behind me. I wanted to mention to you too about the commemorative license plate is now available. You have a test card, entry fee. The Halifax 250 Celebration, we're coming up on April 12th, where is the year four, 2026, so a lot is going to happen in the next year. One of the things that makes it like is a real opportunity to brand is through the license plate programs, but this future works ahead. I'm just a message, please, I'm on the projects committee, this is a project we try to help move forward. Really important that we get 500 license plates sold in the next 60 days. Project update, so our two projects are basically complete. The Eaton Construction Facility, new operations center, and the hotel is going to be completed in April. So we're looking at grand opening events in April, so we'll keep you posted on those. And then the brewery in Littleton, sorry, making its mark in the world, and they're expanding their distribution network. And they're looking at serving networks in the tribal area. And that's unheard of for a new brewery facility like this, so just to know. Our infrastructure projects, we're given opportunity to submit projects to representatives here recently, and we presented, presented the projects that we, from working with from the infrastructure perspective, the premier boulevard water sewer project, the exit 154 project, and the air ball sewer project. We're really aiming to work, it's not the express authority funding that comes through, that's going to be our opportunity to significantly complete the air ball project. There's been several, um, inquiries in February that was busy, listed buildings that we could look onto. We did, listed these buildings, 100,000, 140,000, and then several private businesses that are existing. Lot of activities coming up, you've got this in my report, anything you have a question about, let me know. One thing I wanted to make sure you had, we are collaborating with Halifax Community College on a hire, and that's helping individuals reach important destinations. This is a career fair that's focused on students at Halifax Community College to bring employers and other agencies to help them find pathways to employment. So I'm working hard upon and with President Elliott, and putting this together in this wonderful partnership, we're going to work together in, in opening that pathway for students to come get really, really, I can't. I'm sorry, anything, any questions?
Any question, Ms. Scott?
Just got a, just a brief, I guess, clarification. Could you explain, I guess, a little bit in detail about that exit 154 sewer project as it relates to the Hollister Sewer Project?
Okay, so the exit 154, my organization did a preliminary engineering report to look at extending sewer, because this was a project in field, was in city of, from Potomac Infield to exit 154. There's water already there, sewer's needed, and it is an opportunity to really create economic opportunity for infield by their proximity to that exit. And then just in the last few months, there was a DEQ program that came available that looked like it could be a bridge to help merge two projects together. The exit 154 site, and then the Veta Sewer District that the county was working on. So we had some meetings, we did some support letters, we submitted information in January, I think it was, to DEQ to be selected for participation in funding that could put those two projects together. Because it really would just make it a more regional and more benefiting project to the citizens of Halifax County by putting those two projects together. And so one of the things I'm doing to help facilitate that is we've already approved getting an updated PER, so we'll be working with county to kind of pull that other piece together.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
Yes, yes, thank you.
It's a lot of information, so.
Good question, Commissioner Reddick. Okay, anything else?
That's all.
Okay. Commissioner Reddick has something, I think.
So I'm hearing from all my Edgecombe County friends and their excitement about the new Amazon facility that's coming to their area. Do we ever receive inquiries from Amazon or companies that size that can bring thousands of jobs here?
Right, absolutely. If you, if you look at Amazon, that project in particular, they wanted proximity to the interstate. That's their major focus, and they're going to narrow down their site search to locations that meet those criteria. You know, they don't want to have to go down a long winding road to get to the interstate, they want to be right there. So yes, we get those inquiries, we do. And companies have a criteria or a matrix of criteria that they look at when they're figuring out where they're going to go. And proximity to the interstate is oftentimes one of the things that without an interstate accessible site, we lose that opportunity.
What's some of the other criteria, other than the interstate?
Labor force availability. And recently, there's been a, each year, there's a group called Site Selection. They, they report the criteria that companies identify that they're looking at. And it changes in what those priorities are each year. You'd be surprised, you would think the assets related to site location, things of that nature. But more and more, companies are looking at whether an area can provide their labor force. And what is the proximity of that community to a larger labor base? Are they within a 45-minute drive of major metropolitan area, you know, those kind of things. But I'm happy to share that with you, I think that would be good for we to see.
Thank you.
What those criteria are, but that would answer your question, primarily.
Thank you.
But yes, we do, and you know, we don't oftentimes know that it's Amazon or whatever company that's looking. We get on by code names, but we are always responding. If we have a site or we have an opportunity, and I'll give you an example of interstate site development. So when the county built its first industrial park, it was less than a half a mile of the interstate. And so within 10 years, all the properties that were available sold. You know, there were PCV, Reesers, Pelican, you know, Coca-Cola, all those facilities located within that industrial set.
And you speak in Halifax County, huh?
Yeah. And so, and then the county decided for its next industrial park, this is before I came to live here, that they wanted to purchase one that's adjacent to the airport. Well, that, this is a little isolated and remote, and it doesn't provide that proximity to the interstate. It's like seven miles from the interstate, and not a straight path to get there easily. And then in parallel to that, when the Cochin facility closed, we reached out to them to ask them about marketing their site. It's an interstate served site, less than a half a mile from the interstate. It has some challenges in that it was a former togen facility, but they didn't store coal on the site. So based on one that the company did, it pretty much proved that there was no environmental contamination on the property. But we immediately started marketing that property, and within a year, able to convince Roseburg that that was a good site for them. We also found some funding to clear the site, get rid of all the structures on the property, and a mechanism through which we could purchase the site and then sell it to them once it was cleared. And so yes, that proximity to the interstate, having the product, and I think some of the things that we're doing for the US 301 site, the state considers that to be one of the top 15 industrial sites in the state, and we get a lot of inquiry, and it's just a matter of time. If you look at the Kingsborough site in Edgecombe County, talking about your Edgecombe County friends, it's been on the market for 18 years. So it takes time. Anybody else want to add to that, your list?
Thank you.
Well, we have employees from, I mean, we don't have folks from Halifax working over there too, I would think. Okay, anyone else?
Oh, curiosity, 154 site, proximity to 264 and 95, which 264 is going to be, I mean, 64 is supposed to be designated as an interstate. What has been done to actually move that site forward, especially with the sewage? And I know because of the way station there, I believe he stopped it at the 154 exit, well, they spent millions of dollars just to bring internet up to that exit years ago.
Now, except we don't have a site at exit 154.
But I mean, have we looked at trying to develop anything there?
Yeah, but we have to get sewer there, you know, about sewer. There's not, there's not much we can do, because any industry would need, you know, industrial quality sewer to be able to serve their facilities.
With this suspension you were talking about a while ago, would it bring that sewage there?
Yes, that would, and then absolutely open the door for opportunities at that site. And you know, natural gas would be another factor, so definitely.
Because they got natural gas already there, I believe.
Well, and it's not already there, but it's, it's close enough that it could be expanded.
I got it in the eye, it's come across there somewhere in that area. Yes, and it's not very full.
Those are opportunities, and that's why we're efficient, so we're already get that sewer there, with us a one tap location, you know, to bring more development to that part of the county, and you know, not just for industrial, but for commercial as well. And more and more, you know, the closer you get that goes south, the closer you are to the valley and that area, which also isn't a here. Because from a labor force perspective, companies say, okay, you've got a site here on the interstate, that's going to make it easy for workers to get new, new fast slides. Because out in the boonies, they don't see it.
You know, the thing about it, Ms. Scott, I can tell you, I've talked about 154 all the time, I've been here about that, and you know, I just say 154 as a goal line. You know, I mean, really for Halifax County and for infield, I really see it as a real, real important. Because if you look at 95, that's about the only one up and down 95 that may not be developed, you know, in a state connection like that. So it's, and it's going to happen, it may take time, but it's going to happen.
Staying on our work list, we're looking all the time, when I was at our conference last week, and every opportunity I got to talk about lending source idea, you know, about that particular project. You know, we just need to continue to work collaboratively and look at opportunities like merging the two projects together to try to get.
And I was just going to tell you, natural gas is out there, I have it at my house, if you know somebody can see that, they're glad to hook a house up, they tell you. And if it's not that close, if it's three or four houses, people sign up on the road, they're actually interested in moving it, hooking it up.
I was thinking of us for here, you know, the corporate park that the county's project adjacent to that airport, it's four miles to the natural gas. And that's not cheap, so you know, a company locating there, you know, that's a, that's a big cost to get natural gas if they're not a good user. We've got opportunities for the, so look at it.
Good discussion. Anything else? You finished, Ms. Scott?
Yes, I am.
Thank you. Appreciate you, yep, good questions, Commissioner Silver. Alright, next item, item seven, county manager is important, a hardworking county manager.
Oh, what is on? Thank you, Mr. Chairman, good morning, for 30 more minutes to all of you. Scroll down a little bit. Got a few items for you. First, I want to point out some, you've got a lot of handouts today, the very colorful sheets, such are places, are about our 4H summer camps that are going to start in June. What's special about this one that has the boxes on it is that we are able to provide transportation to those specific communities for those camps. So if, if nothing else, you could have a child that could have at least one camp where they would have transportation provided for every day of that camp. They're really good camps, we've worked with 4H on their approved curriculum, and every summer, these kids have a ball. In conjunction with that, we have this program, after some conversations we've had internally, about sponsoring a child for summer camp. It's only $55, as we've talked about previously, but if you are inclined, and you're welcome to share it among your networks, for sponsoring a child for a week at camp, this is the information that you have, if you're interested. Always, and it's that time, it's March, it's time to get ready for the summer, if you can believe it. Along that same line, I provided you some information on Friday about recreation at the request of Commissioner Silver, just gave you an update. Just very briefly, we have a lot of things going on, you're going to see more come to you even in the next month. We met with a group from the Department of Commerce last week called CORE, which is Creating Outdoor Recreation Economies, which just will kind of feed into everything else that we're doing. And we're getting ready to start our comprehensive development plan, which will have a very large recreation component. Additionally, with that, you'll be invited, I think I had it in your update last week, before your next meeting on April 7th at 8 o'clock, you'll be invited to go out to the 4H Center on 903, just for a meet and greet breakfast to hear some of the projects that Co-op is working on, particularly with recreation. We have two new 4H agents, one is dedicated to recreation. The county was able to provide funding to go with some state funding to make that a full-time position dedicated to recreation. So I hope that you'll come to that, they, they know they are on a very tight schedule that morning for one hour, so that you can get here for your 9:30 meeting. And at your 9:30 meeting, they'll have some official business for you, which is their annual, it's called the Report to the People, that Beth Virchell, the director, will present, and she'll probably have some of her staff with you.
So we need to be at 4H, on what date is that, and what time?
April 7th at 8:00 AM.
Okay, and they will have breakfast for us, right?
Yes.
It's making great.
You won't, you won't conduct any county business, you will be fed breakfast and coffee, I'm sure. And they will have an hour just to introduce you to the staff, tell you about some of the programs that they provide. They are really out in the community in this county. And then you'll see them again at your meeting at 9:30. Are there questions about that before I move on?
No, but you, I think you already emphasized, it won't be a meeting, it's just.
It is not a meeting, it's.
Not a meeting.
Do we need to respond, like another, is it an R S V P?
They're, they're planning for y'all to be there, so no, I'll, I'll let them know that we're all planning to, it'll be the Commissioners and Management Team and Co-op staff. Okay, and then in addition to that, I did provide another update on the various internet projects going on in the county. As you know, we have very little authority when it comes to providing internet or bobbin as a utility. There are several projects going on, Access On is doing the project in the Hollister area, which actually falls over into a little bit of Warren County. That is a USDA reconnect project. We have absolutely nothing to do with that, but we're just glad it's here. They have been one of the more responsive ISPs, internet service providers, as far as giving us updates and letting us know the things that they're doing. And they're sending those, I believe they're quarterly updates that I do pass along to y'all. And then we have a couple of great grants that are in process with Bright Speed and with FIB, which is a piece of Roanoke Connect. That's, that's working in various, more down towards the Scotland Lake area. And then the ARDOF, I don't know how intelligently I can speak about this, Christine, I'm able to do better, but it's Rural Digital Opportunity Fund. But that went through Charter Spectrum, and they have a couple more years to complete a build for 3100 locations. That's also down in the Tillery-Hub gets Scotland Lake area, and really in Springs. So there are projects going on, we just don't have a lot of input, control, authority over them. But we are staying on top of what they're doing so that we can give you the information, so you can pass it on.
And Ms. Dunne, we're getting reports from, and I know it's a lot of them, it's really too many of them, but we don't have any control over that, we just have to, I hate to say play the game, but we just have to do what we have to do.
We, right, we don't have any kind of enforcement of these programs that would fall to either the state through the great grants, or the, our federal partners with USDA, or through ARDOF, Rural Digital Opportunity Fund, which is through the FCC.
But all the ones who are reporting to us are reporting, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Yes, ma'am.
Keeping in mind what Ms. Harris said during public comment, I think it was, how can we share this information with our public, you know? They hear that the funding is here in the county, and they assume that the county has control over it. But actually, those funds went directly to the providers.
Right.
And we're so, our hands are sort of tied. You know, we want to be a supporter, partnership with them, but we're, we're out of the loop control. So, what can we do as a board of Commissioners to share our updates with the citizens at large?
I think we could probably do a little bit better job of presenting this where we could share it, and then you all could share it. We learned in a class that we were in a few weeks ago that now they ask you to share information first via social media. That is the new way of doing things. I thought that was really interesting. That's been quite the change in the last five to ten years. But we can certainly dedicate some more efforts to sharing that on our social media pages, and then particularly with our towns, the municipalities, when we, when we see them every other month, we can, I'm happy to share those updates with them. And ideally, they would in turn share it with their, with their citizens. And if you have other ideas, I'll take them, of how we can spread this information, that in some areas, it is coming.
Commissioner Silver. Dear, do you have a map that show what, what providers should be providing for Hollister, Enfield, and White Oak areas?
We do. I don't have it with me. We can certainly share that with.
And maybe if we can share that somewhere openly and let these people, because I'm going to tell you what's happening. They talk to their representatives in Washington DC and other places, and they're saying, we gave money to the county, and some of them have said the tribe. And so now they're being told that the county nor the tribe has did, has did anything. So, being new county commissioner, I feel like we should answer those people instead of they come stand here and hear nothing, and we hear crickets. Crickets is not good. So, if we can get a map, and maybe we could talk with those people from those companies and find out what the status are, do you have a timeframe for implementation of it, or what, something besides crickets.
Yeah, we can give you another, another map with those locations on it. They have come to meetings before, but they really need to be coming regularly, at, at least twice a year, if not more often. They are submitting those progress reports that I do share. But sometimes you just need to hear it. And, and they need to hear from y'all, that, that what you're hearing out in the community, it, it can help light a fire.
If you give, go ahead. If you give me that information, I will call them, and I will have some other people call them. So, they, and you set up a date for invitation.
Well, what I was going to suggest, Commissioner Silver and other Commissioners, is, and I'll continue to say, Commissioner Reddick, is maybe just do what you just said, Ms. Denton. Because I think the old times that they did appear before us, I think that we did request them to come. And then they, they did show up. So, maybe if you would just let them know that we want them to really come to us at least twice a year, minimum.
Okay.
And give us an update. And at that time, we can be prepared to ask questions. And also, Commissioner Silver, getting back to you and other Commissioners, you can let your constituents know, you have their agenda by hand, just let them know, come to this particular meeting, they're going to be there. Now, they need to know this, all our constituents need to know that. They can't be asking questions, you know. We do the question asking, you know, but they can talk to them like at a break or something like that, or after the meeting. Or they can, you know, speak during public comment if it's their first meeting in a month or something. But they can't be coming here asking questions, that's not going to be allowed. But, but anyway, your point is well taken. And another thing too about the media thing, yes, social media is good, but another thing, and I'm sure RSPN is listening to us now, and also the newspaper, but that's two other ways of, you know, information getting out as well. Did you finish?
You got, we got it covered. Okay, Commissioner Reddick?
I was just going to say, in addition to social media and the media, we also have church announcements. Reverend Webb can speak to that. And all of our churches are announcing what's going on, not only in the church, but in the communities.
Good point.
And we also have, I think, a database with our community organizations who we, who meet either weekly or monthly, who can also share information. And lastly, our schools can also share information during PTA, school board, and other meetings. And lastly, I want to thank Ms. Wells. She told me beforehand that the bus will stop in Tillery. But I did have a question about that. How far in advance do we need to let you all know if we have children in, you know, other parts of the county where the bus might be able to stop?
I, I cannot answer that directly.
Okay.
I would encourage you to just to contact the Cooperative Extension Office. We'll make sure y'all have that information.
Okay.
They can give you all the details about, like, what time the bus will pick up and that kind of thing, and, and the stops.
Thank you.
Can we get flyers like this shared with us by email, that I can upload it on my social media pages and stuff like?
Yeah, we'll send them to you directly. That might be a little bit easier for y'all to manage.
I, I know what Canva mail, they do the social media posts, and all we just need is that link that we can share.
Sure. Yeah, we'll be glad to share that directly with y'all, and you can share it. And we'll have it up on ours as well.
And is there a main flyer about the camp?
I believe there is. I don't have it with me. We'll get that for you as well.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, sorry, I'm just making notes.
It's okay.
One last item, and I need your guidance and direction on, I have this in your weekly update as well. Several weeks ago, the Register of Deans sent an email to, directly to the clerk to the board that she no longer has the Commissioners' minutes in the vault at the Register of Deans office. There wasn't a lot of back and forth with this. It did not come with much warning. We didn't have any context. And just with some short conversations with her, that she said she would eventually need space, somewhat contradictory to some other conversations we've had, primarily because a lot of the recordings done now are done so electronically. And so, a lot of things are digital now, things are recorded that way. They have been, the minute books that go back as far as there have been boards of Commissioners. And some are so fragile that if, if you move them, it really could damage them. And being in that vault is their best protection against any kind of fire or water damage, God forbid, if, if there was. It's the best protection for them. I don't have another location identified. We do understand there is space designated down there for the minute books. And then it used to be some additional ordinance books and resolution books. But those are now included in the minutes, and that also saves space. I'll open it up to anybody else, either the clerk or, or the chair, if y'all have any comments. And if y'all have any questions, we'll try to answer them.
Well, I'll, I'll start it off, then the clerk can chime in if she'd like, or the attorney. But I know we have to store the minutes in a location that's, that's fire prevention, that's water prevented. You know, that entire new courthouse can burn down, but that vault will be there with our minutes. And, I mean, you know, just that make plain itself. It's got to be in a location like that. And it's only two places that I know of that has that location. And I know, I see Commissioner Webb shake his head, he knows what we call the old location. There's a clerk of courts office. That's all the two, in the Register of Deans, there are two locations I know that have a vault, you know, down there where we can, you know, keep that. But it's been, our records for this board has been in that office. And I've checked back ever since the inception of the Halifax County Board of Commissioners. It's been stored in the Register of Deans office. And I have talked with the previous Register of Deans, just so you all know. And she has verified that. So, but it's been stored there forever. And Judy Barker was the previous Register of Deans. Anyway, that's all I have to say at this point. Madam Clerk, you have anything you want to add?
I got one more question. The vault in the Register of Deans, does the county technically own it? I mean, it's ours, right?
Everything belongs to the county.
Everything in that building is owned by the county, yes, including the clerk's vault. We let them, we have to provide that.
We just don't want the operations of it, but the building and the contents, we're responsible.
I know that she's an elected official, but does she, does her office give her the authority to dictate what goes in that thing?
After Commissioner Davis, I know Turner Riles has something to say, and then we'll hear from Commissioner Silver. Go ahead.
So, I, I think not. I think if, the Board of Commissioners of this county have always had the minutes stored in a safe vault. I've been here long enough when the Register of Deans office was right under us, where finance is now. That used to be where the Register of Deans office was. And that has a vault as well. And those records have always been kept there because that's the safe place to keep them. It's your vault, it's your office, you're required to provide her a space for the Register of Deans, and you're doing that. But that doesn't mean that she gets to, that doesn't mean that she controls what stays in her vault. If you want your records to be there and kept safe there, then they're going to be there and kept safe there. Now, having said that, be, keep in mind that you are required to give her enough space to do her job. So, as time goes on, if she needs more space to do her job under the general statutes, then you'll have to make arrangements for that. I don't know what that would be. But the two things can go together. I'll reiterate what the manager said, and that is that I'm not sure where we put these records at this point. And it's more important, in my view, to keep them safe for now than to pull them out and not know where you're going to go with them.
Commissioner Silver. How many vaults do we have? One or two vaults to destroy?
There's one, there's one vault in the Register of Deans office. When that courthouse was built, about thirty-five years ago, or close to forty now, there are two vaults in the building. One is in the clerk's office, because they also have records that have to be kept safe. And the other is with the Register of Deans office. And we, I say vault, we go in and working there all the time. So, it, it's a vault in the sense that when it closes up, it, it's fireproof. But it's a working space. And there's many, many other things in the vault. There are computer terminals, there are tables, chairs, counters, books. But just those two, those two spaces are the protected areas in the building.
I'd also say that our minute books date back to eighteen seventy-four in that vault. Those books are about this wide and near about this tall. They're very fragile, pages are yellow. I would not let them, Miss Constable, about the minute books, they be moved, but they are moving the vault. And we also have our minutes, and so it's almost wrapped into the website. We have a minutes library that dates off the way back to the nineteen twenties up until twenty twenty-three. So, we try to make our minutes available to the public. Because the more hands that touch it, the more it starts to fall apart. And the minutes are on special paper, our pad of paper, so it should last forever. And those are our original documents. And if we are responsible for those official documents, keep them safe. We do have minute books, we have our ordinance books, and our resolution books. And we already saved space. I'm now combining it with that, the resolutions and the ordinances to the minute book that saves space. And also, when we take our minute books now to the Register of Deans office, this form that is still there, that they are accepting our book, and they're going to make sure that our book is protected. The latest one that we sent down, it was book number forty-two, and Karen actually signed for that book in seven twenty-nine, twenty-four. So, every time that we, we, the minute book, it gets taken down to their office, they sign off that they're receiving our book, and that they're going to protect our book. Now, we do have, I guess we'll go back to the Drew Barbie days, we actually purchased a Sheldon for our minute books. Drew says it's getting really, really tight, but that was before they became digital. So, in passing last year, as part of the budget, government budget, I had put in more, another, another set of Sheldon, just to keep all of our minutes together. Sheldon that we've had is not for it. But, you know, the budget, we've just got to get it while it can. But when I spoke with her, I didn't include it in the budget because she, I said, I told Christine that I was going to try to put another Sheldon in the budget, and she told me not to worry about it because they've gone digital, we have more than enough space. So, we haven't bought additional Sheldon. But I would not recommend, as the Constable, of those records that are in the Register of Deans.
You know, Commissioners, I'm sure y'all, I'm sure you all know by now from this conversation here, that the responsibility of those minutes is ours and the clerk's. Now, you know, I mean, we, we got a huge responsibility as it relates to those minutes. And I'm not trying to sway you one way or the other, except we got a huge responsibility here. And you just need to be mindful of that.
And I did talk about closed session books. We do have closed session books. They are in my archival hall, and they're to your waterproof, fireproof vault cabinet. And as we fill them up with minutes, they go to the vault and keep them safe.
Commissioner Silver. So, what I'm hearing you say is, if we were to ever try to move those, we would need someone specially trained to do that. Second, that is the vault that belongs to the county, correct?
Yes, so you're absolutely right on both of those points.
Okay, and so, third point, the vault is our responsibility, correct? And we're loaning that spacing. We're keeping, allowing her to keep her records as needed?
Well, you got to go back to what Attorney Riles said. He, he can say a whole lot better than me. Say that again.
I wouldn't so much say it's loaned to her. You are required to provide space for the Register of Deans. And this is the space you provide. That doesn't mean that it's exclusive. And it never has been exclusive. Our, our conversations have been that our minutes and records have always been kept in that same space. You're now being asked to give up that space. You're not required to do that because she's asking you to. You certainly could because she's asking you to, but you're not required to. And if you continue to have your records there at some point in the future, there may come a time when there actually is a space problem, and you will have to deal with that at some point. Register of Deans has to have enough room to do her job as well, and you're required to provide that space for her to be able to do that. Question is, are we there now? I don't think we are. Will we reach that point? We could, you know, down the road. But for the time being, it doesn't seem to me, and staff, that we're at a point where the records have to be out.
Okay, Commissioner Reddick? You finished, Commissioner Silver? I think you answered the question. So, we don't have an issue unless we go make it sound like, sound like to me a safety issue. All right. Commissioner Reddick?
Is there a possibility to begin the process of exploring the prospect of a new space, but keep what we have in place for now? Because as we move on and evolve, we do know that digital files can become corrupted or inaccessible as well. So, is it, isn't it the case that we do still need hard copies of all of these materials, most likely, for the time being?
You're talking about us or her?
Us. Well, just the county in general, whether it's the records in the Register of Deans office, the county commissioner records that are over there, court records.
We're in the middle of renovating the courthouse to outfit the third floor. So, that's part of all of these conversations. And all of the tenants there were interviewed about space needs. And we got a very generic response about just eventually needing more space for books. That's, that's all that we got. It was, it was not the biggest need that we heard from all the tenants in that building. But for our space, we, we do need to keep them, the originals.
And have the oldest books that are the most fragile, have they been digitized yet?
It's true.
Oh, okay.
Well, they, the oldest of those books are Lesafish, and they're with, they're on the, they're on that, that, that place. So, they are meant for Michael.
Oh, they are?
We tried to actually. We tried to actually get some of the older ones online. They're in such vouch.
And I think that's true with records in the clerk's office and the Register of Deeds as well. They're archived with the state. Because that's required, that they be archived that way. I should know, but I don't really know what's happening with, for example, when deeds are recorded now. There's no deed book. You can't find a deed book for anything that's been recorded in the last 10 years or so. Michelle may know. There are no more deed books that you can go and pull off the shelf. It's all digital. And you're right, because we had an issue, that happened one time, that we had a computer crash. And for a while there, no one could access the Register of Deeds stuff. But I'm not sure that there's any requirement that there be a paper copy at this point, as long as you've got the digital file. And they're...these records are also kept in archives with the state. The court system is going to e-filing hard and fast. I'm not ready for that, but we're going to that. So, that's going to help a lot with space considerations. But fair point, at some point, we need to be thinking about our own records and how we keep them safe. But for the time being, it's been in the Register of Deeds vault.
Commissioner Davis.
One last question, I think. What is the protocol procedure for someone going in the vault and removing a book or minutes or removing items?
You're talking about hours of hers, I mean, hours of the Register of Deeds.
Well, for anyone going in, it's...
I mean, do you mean like, like if somebody, like a friend of mine doesn't work, but they can't...were to go in and try to take them?
No, as...okay, the issue is space. So, since there is a request, what prevents the Register of Deeds from going in that vault and removing our minutes because she needs space?
I'd rather not address that in this setting. But, you know, fair question. But for that matter, what prevents...
I hope that wouldn't happen.
What prevents anyone from walking into the vault and taking a book and walking out? Well, actually, probably nothing to be done unless, you know, someone sees you going out.
So, what's the protocol? Does anybody check?
I couldn't speak to that.
Do they have to check it out? I mean, or sign in to see it?
In my 43 years, I've never heard of that being an issue, although I suppose it's something that could happen.
And I only can speak from my real estate hat. Now, I've gone in there a long time ago when I used to pull deeds and stuff, Commissioner Barrett, from my real estate. And, you know, I mean, I used to tell folks that I went in, and I think attorneys used to do the same thing. But all of that, that was about it. I mean, you know, you just maybe notice some...notify someone that you're in there, what you're doing. And that wasn't even always the case. If you, like those two, they pretty much knew what they're doing when they went in. But I would only go in there periodically, so I would just maybe check with someone, just let them know.
I can't tell you in the clerk's office, as a member of the public, you can't get back there unless the clerk lets you in.
Right.
Not the case in the Register of Deeds office, because we just don't have that kind of setup in the Register of Deeds office. And in other counties, that may be the case. I don't know. But here, our vault in the Register of Deeds office is open to the public. You can walk in, and you can go right into the vault and look at anything on the shelves you want to look at. And you're not supposed to take it out of the vault, or, you know, out of the building or out of the office. But I can't say there's any, you know, necessarily a way to prevent that. But, you know, and we're getting a little far field on that question, but it's a fair question about how secure the records are.
Mr. Chairman, I got...
Yes, sir.
Maybe we can keep us...I would make a suggestion. Maybe this is a solution to this, is I would make a suggestion that we tell the Register of Deeds we want to keep those records in the vault. But if it becomes an immediate space need for her, then let's look at some of those extremely old records that we say are in the North County Archives. And we can start moving some of those extremely old records into some...something else. Because 150-year-old records are really historical. They're not really for any other purpose.
Right.
I mean, you know, so we can start maybe moving those into, you know, the Wilson Library of the Chapel Hill, take those historical books, or we can move them somewhere else. You know, I mean, it's...
I'm not opposed to that, Commissioner Barrett, but I don't think that's going to get us to first base on this. I think we have to make a firm, stern decision about it. That's just my opinion.
I mean, I...my purpose is, we're going to leave them there.
Okay.
I mean, that's my opinion is, yeah, we're not...
But I think if you have...
In a...I guess if I would branch at some point down the road, we might...we might, and I would not say we're...might be willing to see what we can do with some of the, like you said, the ones that you can't even touch anymore. What do they do?
It's been great, though.
At the end of the day, they're our official documents.
Right.
Our originals, which makes it even more historical. And we need to preserve those documents because they are our official documents. If someone walked out of that building with a book, we can reproduce that book in terms of finding that minute book for the state and saying, hey, I need more copies of what you have. But it's basically, and also, we have it on the web. But those official books are our official books. They have to be connected according to the... We have a general schedule that we go by in terms of our public bodies, minutes. And so, the North County Department of Natural and Cultural Resources state that you use... These are our permanent documents.
Or retention schedules.
Yes, our retention schedule.
Yeah, goes back to what I said earlier. Huge responsibility for this board and for you, clerk. Okay, Commissioner Reddick.
I'm not challenging whether or not the space belongs to the county, because it does. But do we have a firm understanding of how much space is left over there? Like, has anyone physically been over there since the request was made to see from a percentage standpoint how much is left for us to store materials before we make a decision, a firm decision?
I can't answer that, Commissioner Reddick. I'm not sure if staff, you know, has answered that or not.
I think the information we have from just last year is that there's more than enough space, is what we're...what we were told last year.
So, between that assessment and now, we wouldn't have filled it up?
No.
Okay.
And then the county's purchased shelving. At least, we should still have space on that shelving. So, we should have enough for at least four more books that are about...
Did they answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Now, could you also, Madam Clerk, purchase even more shelving if needed?
Yes, but the reason why we didn't last year was because Christie said that, you know, there was going to be more than enough space. So, we needed to purchase more shelving.
All right. Anyone else? Okay, Turner Rollins and Ms. Denton, you all have anything to add?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Madam Clerk, you have anything else you want to add? All right. If not, Commissions, we need to make a decision on this. You know, I think her original email, I can't remember what date it is. I know we had it before us. It may have been in January, I think.
It was late January.
Right, right. And that, you know, she asked us to have the books removed within a 10-day period. And of course, you know, we...anyway, this is March. So, we need to...we need a firm vote to make a decision about what you want to do.
Do you want something to vote?
Yes, sir.
Well, Mr. Rollins, I'm going to defer to you to help me out. I'm going to tell you what I want, and you help me out with how I can say it. I think we need to leave the books where they are, and if the Register of Deeds... They need to be stored in the Register of Deeds vault.
Okay, that's all right, Lieutenant Rollins.
I'll vote for your motion.
Okay, motion made by Commissioner Barrett. Is there a second? Second. Second by Commissioner Webb. And a further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, Madam Clerk, like the record, so like that decision is unanimous. All right. Thank you all so much for that. Good discussion, long discussion, but very needed discussion. Ms. Denton, anything else?
That's all I have for open session. We'll have a couple of things for you in closed session that are legal matters that we'll be tag teaming on.
Okay, all right. Now, we'll move to the county attorney's report. Thank you.
Well, good afternoon. Couple of things that came up this week that I couldn't otherwise get into the agenda, but need to be...I want to address with you. They were referenced in your weekly update. And one has to do, and I'll take them in the order that they were received last week. One has to do with a request from D'Revah Energy, who is our current tenant at the solar farm property out at the old airport. This is roughly 220 acres of land out there that we have under a solar lease that arose out of our economic development agreement with Genex back in 2012, 2014, that idea. Just, I don't know how else to say it, except that D'Revah has requested that we extend the term of that lease from 25 years, which is the current term, for an additional 15 years to a 40-year lease. That's the only proposal they've made to amend the lease agreement, is to extend the lease term. They didn't offer to any other rent increase other than the usual 3% every five-year rent increase that we would have over that additional 15-year period. I...as soon as I was aware of the request, I responded with the representative for D'Revah and told them that there were, you know, I wanted to be sure I understood the request, and I did. But it let them know that there are a couple of complications here with this. One, this is and continues to be economic development property. The board declared it to be economic development property before we ever got involved with Genex, when it became our property, when the airport closed. The lease that is currently in place came about in the economic development context. I say that to mean that normally, when you lease county property, you have to go through some of what I call Article 12 procedures, which is a fancy way of saying there are certain procedures you have to follow. Including a lease that's for more than 10 years, you have to treat it like a sale of the property. In other words, you have to have an offer and upsets that did process for leases that are more than 10 years. We did not have to do this with this lease to Genex for 25 years because this was part of an economic development program, and we're exempted from those normal Article 12 procedures when we did that. However, if you're going to come in and request that you get another 15 years on your lease, the problem for me is, is that this is still an economic development project. I think we'd have to have another public hearing for economic development to determine how extending that lease for an additional 15 years would meet the statutory and constitutional requirements to provide incentives to a company, economic development incentives to a company. In other words, what incentives can we offer to D'Revah, in this case, adding 15 years to the lease? But what would be coming back to the county in terms of economic development that's required under the ED statute? Now, I also told the representative that if you wanted to sum...if you could, if you wanted somehow to purge this lease from its economic development beginnings, then you've got to, and I'm not sure you could do that, but if you did, then you've got another 15-year extension on the lease, which has to go through, you have to treat it like a sale of the property. You'd have to have advertised an offer for someone to have a 15-year lease. Does anybody else want to pay us more than what they're going to pay us? You have to go through that. That's a very, you know, weird process. It seems odd that you have to treat a lease like a sale. But the theory behind that is that the county leasing property generally is frowned upon. And if you've got to lease property for more than 10 years, the statute actually says, well, if you're going to lease it more than 10 years, you don't need it. So, just sell it. So, that's why you treat more than 10-year-long leases as a sale. I think this would be a real mess to try to work through. I think I can speak for county staff in saying that we don't recommend that you consider extending this lease another 15 years. On the other hand, the reason I'm bringing it to you is because it's kind of your call. And if you say for us to pursue it, we will pursue it as best we can, but be aware of the really odd legal entanglements we can get into with economic development lease at this point. And I can appreciate that D'Revah wants to be there longer. But they assumed a lease that was part of the economic development project, and they've assumed what they have assumed when they got this lease. And there's not much we can do about that. So, that's my take on it. I'll defer to Dia, she has more thoughts on it. But I wanted you to be aware of the request and wanted your direction on it.
Okay, Ms. Denton, you have anything to add?
I do not.
Okay. You've heard the information coming from our attorney. Do you have any questions, discussions? If not, we need a motion to do whatever your pleasure is.
Well, I don't so much need a motion, sorry, Mr. Chairman. But if you tell me to continue to talk with them about it, we'll continue to talk to them about it. If you tell me, tell them thanks but no thanks, then we'll tell them thanks but no thanks. But I wanted you to be aware that we've been contacted, and we want your direction before we do anything else.
I think your staff's recommendation is, thanks but no thanks.
That's correct.
Yes.
Okay, can we get a hand nod for that, if you're all okay with the thanks, no thanks?
Oh, my gosh.
Okay, that's what it is, a hand nod.
Okay, we're going to move right along.
Go ahead.
All right, I save the second. Better for second. On Friday morning, after being told on Thursday evening that I had this letter, which I knew I didn't, on Friday morning, in the mail, finally, we received a... And I'm grateful for it. I mean, finally sarcastically. We finally received from the Secretary of DEQ a delegation of authority to participate in hydralisk control on Lake Gaston. Secretary Wilson sent a letter to me that says that he's delegating to Halifax County authority to participate in the control of hydralisk on Lake Gaston as permitted under the Aquatic Weed Control Act. And the delegation of authority is limited to implementation of an MOA between DEQ and Lake Gaston Weed Control. Lake Gaston Weed Control currently has a grant from DEQ of $75,000 to treat hydralisk on Lake Gaston. I put a copy of that agreement in your agenda pack, I mean, in your weekly update, and a copy of the letter from DEQ in the weekly update. The grant that...in other words, we're being authorized to participate in the implementation of that grant program by, essentially, by providing the local match if we choose to do so. The grant agreement is a grant of $75,000 for a $150,000 hydralisk treatment program. And 75...the other $75,000 has to come from local funds, either from the Weed Council or other local matching funds, which we are now authorized to provide. Now, having said that, that gives us now the authority to go ahead and put together a grant agreement with Lake Gaston Weed Control to participate in this state grant with them. Since the budget they developed is for $150,000, I would propose that you authorize us to enter into a grant agreement for $75,000 to match their state grant. The other thing we would need you to do is I know this money is not in the current budget. We left this out of the budget until we knew what we were going to be able to do. So, the other thing we may need, Mary, and I don't...can I do it? Can I just ask them to do it today to authorize a budget amendment for $75,000, and we'll figure out how to save that later?
For contingency.
Okay. Wherever they want to bring it from, it's not as long as my bank account, but, yeah. So, two things. I'd like your authorization to go ahead and put together a grant agreement and authorize the county managers to execute that. And along with that, a motion to amend our annual budget to pull from contingencies $75,000 to fund our local grant to Lake Gaston Weed Control under this authorization we now have.
Can I be done the same motion?
It's okay with me if you do that. Um, it's okay with me if you do that, yes, sir.
Um, let me ask you something.
Yes, sir.
Tony Rollins and, and Commissioners. I don't know exactly how to ask this, but sure to ask it. What happens to the 116? Now, I know Commissioner Webb was sitting on there laughing, I mean, who else would ask?
All right, well, okay, let's talk, let's, let's discuss this. They, they want, they want $116,000 from the county because that's what they've gotten from North Hampton and Warren County. Um, and I've had this discussion with most of you before, but the newer board members haven't had to sit through this with me, so I'm gonna try to spare you the worst of it. But we, we have not ever had legal authority to give $116,000 to Lake Gaston Weed Control since we were in doing it. Um, and I spoke to the board about that several years ago, that if you're going to provide, um, public funding to a nonprofit entity, you've got to have, there are two things. You've got to have the legal authority to participate in the same activity they're participating in, which is hydrola control, and you've got to have the authority, you've got to have, you know, the authority to use a certain source of revenue. We do not have the authority to use property tax revenues for this purpose. So this grant agreement will have to say that this money will have to be coming from sales taxes. It can't come from property tax. Um, and that, but the other, more important part is, what's our legal authority to even participate in hydrola control? And the only authority we have is what we now have from the Secretary of DEQ. The, the state has decided that treating hydrola is something that DEQ should be responsible for. The Secretary can delegate authority under his discretion to a county to do that, and this is what we've been asking for since the beginning of the fiscal year, um, and we now have it. Uh, but on our own, we don't have any authority to go out and treat hydrola in any body of water. Um, so, uh, I, I, my, my reaction to $116,000 would be that, wait a minute, you submitted a budget for $150,000 to treat hydrola, you've got 75 coming from the state. We're in a position that we can provide the other 75,000 for a local match, but not more. Uh, so that would be my reaction to that request. I don't know if you all have other questions about that, but, um, I will continue to advise you that, that spending more than what you have authority to spend is not something you should do.
So we're getting $150,000, 75 from the state, 75 from us, that's more than $116 they're getting from other counties.
But, but their intention is to use $116 from each of the counties to do all kinds of things, not just hydrola treatment. They, they're, they're using that money. Uh, the money they've received from North Hampton and Warren County, they're also using to treat lingbia, which is an entirely different topic. Um, and, and at some point, I'm hoping that DEQ will provide us with the same authority to assist with lingbia, but, uh, you know, that's a different, it's, lingbia is not a, a, um, noxious weed, aquatic, noxious aquatic plant, it's a back, it's an algae. And I think DEQ is working on that, they've got some leeway to do that, but they're not there yet, and I continue to ask them, let us know where this stands, so at some point, if, if we can get authority to do that.
Right.
We're, I think you're prepared to do that, but I'm not prepared to tell you to do that at this point.
You know, I'm just asking these questions because I know Attorney, Commissioner Webb is gonna ask, Commissioner Davis may ask, but, uh, anyway, so, it's out there now. Um, yes, sir, Commissioner, uh...
Nobody else can, you, nobody else can more than Scotty.
Yes, sir.
I was gonna make a motion if you ain't, if y'all are ready.
I just want clarification.
Make a motion.
How many counties are involved and contributing at this point?
I believe there are five.
Five, okay.
And there are three in North Carolina, two in, two in Virginia, yes. Um, and, well, we can go all day long about the history on that, but, but the long and short is, there's no interlocutor agreement between any of those counties to do this.
Okay, yeah, okay. Okay, Commissioner Burr?
Can we do it all in one motion?
Yes, sir.
All right, then I'll make a motion that we authorize staff to enter into a grant agreement with Lake Gaston Weed Control, and that we have made a budget amendment to authorize $75,000 match for that.
Right, from contingencies.
From contingencies.
Okay, motion made by Commissioner Burr, is that a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Webb. Any further discussion?
Yeah, no worries.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay.
Okay, I think that's all I have for, for you. We've got a couple things in closed session.
Okay, all right.
Be in our interest.
Okay, I know it's 112:45, we're gonna try to move right along a little bit more swift here. Um, you have item, on the other business, you have item A, resolution honoring the legacy and leadership of the infield, run-up Rapids Alumni Chapter of Devil's Sigma Theta Sorority. Um, I believe you have a letter from, um, a resolution regarding that. Judge Friedman, who's a member of that group, had requested that, and I'm sure that you all will have a chance to read it. And unless you have further comments, questions, I would just ask for your motion for approval for that, and that's retro. Okay, motion made by Commissioner Reddick, is that a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Silver, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, item B, resolution honoring the life and legacy of Reverend Nelson Napoleon Johnson. Not only, I mean, it has my name, but actually Commissioner Reddick was the one who brought it to my attention, and, um, and I'm sure that you have that information in your pack as well. Uh, are there any questions or comments or not? And Commissioner Reddick, do you have anything you want to add to that?
No, sir.
Okay, I'd like for a motion for that. Should I move? Okay, motion made by Commissioner Silver, is that a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Webb. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Um, I got a couple of things, and then you all may have some things. Um, I know it was in the packet of information or in the agenda, weekly memo, wow, I can tell it's 12, 12:15, I'm getting all tongue-tied here, um, that Vice Chair Davis was to read, um, something from the tribe in regards to a proposed resolution for power out of the... Go ahead, Commissioner.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, you have it in your package, but due to a slight wording issue, um, that was recently found, we're going to sort of hold that off at the chief's request, um, to defer that until April the 7th.
Okay, okay, all right. Everybody got that? Okay, sorry about that, I was jumping the gun.
No, you're fine.
All right, and the last thing I want to pass out to you, um, there was a lady, Madam Clerk, and I don't know if she had given this to you or to Wanda, uh, but anyway, it's information about the Rosenwall School, and, um, she had wanted us to have this information. She had put a lot of good information together about the Rosenwall School, and, um, I'm just gonna pass this out to you. Um, ladies from, from Weldon, Ms. Hawkins, she had put this information as well, it's a lot of good information about the Rosenwall School. I'm gonna pass this over to our county attorney, our county manager, and ask her to pass it on to the library so they can kind of put this in storage for us. You all have it too, right? Is that what, what's in your package? Rosenwall School?
No, I don't think so.
No, that's something else, okay. All right. I'm just gonna pass this around, kind of quickly. I'll tell you, it's a, it's a lot of good information, y'all, really is. Um, maybe do that way. Dia, I'm gonna, I'm gonna leave this with you, and maybe just give it to the library. And this is just some history, you know, they had a lot of Rosenwall Schools around that really had, even one out there on 561, and I believe the one now is located out there at the 48 Center. Um, but just a, a lot of good information, uh, in here about different folks involved in the, uh, in the Rosenwall School. And I do believe, um, this Pittman lady, Ms. Leanna Bell Pittman, uh, was a relative of my mother. Um, I believe she was. Anyway, uh, that's just for information, and, um, you know, a lot of good information about the Rosenwall School. Okay, uh, with that being said, anyone else? Anything on the other business? Yes?
I have something, this is sort of, um, coming from Commissioner Reddy's idea, and I wanna join him in this. Um, but I was wondering if there was a way that the county could help us organize trips to our legislature, um, our state legislature in session, um, just to have some of our citizens, youth, students, um, to go up there on the day, so they could see the process of how that, how law was made and how things are, are, um, argued and come to be law and policy for us in the state. Um, so I was just wondering if you could help us coordinate that, um, what we can do.
Say you mean like, like students or citizens that are interested in, in, in the work of the General Assembly? We could certainly talk to the, to our delegation and see what the best, um, options are for visiting. At, at first I thought you meant for you all, and I was like, well, you have an advocacy day, or advocacy days typically in May, um, that you go through our state association to visit, but, but once you, um, went a little bit further, I figured out that's not exactly what it was. We could reach out to them and see what the best, um, kind of how to work out those logistics that they want to...
You add to it, I don't want to steal your idea, but, um, I just thought it was a great idea, and I would love to, to work with you on that.
I would just add that I... Thank you for acknowledging the great idea, and some of our residents sometimes don't know that they have a right to be in those spaces to not only meet their elected officials, but also share with their ideas, or to challenge them or question them about decisions, and also to help make policies. So if they are, you know, upset about their school systems, or a lack of high-speed internet, or a lack of recreation, uh, just because they are hard-working people who don't have all the time in the world to take off, they still deserve to see their elected officials in Raleigh, and to see them, uh, between elections. Uh, so we shouldn't just see people when they're running for office, so, thank you.
Sorry, we can do that.
Excuse me. Yes, sir. Before going, just like I said, thank you to the group, it was an honor for me and Commissioner Reddick to be in DC representing the county, but it was a great opportunity for us to understand what goes on in DC has a great impact here, such as Medicaid, um, things at school, because we, you know, fund school buildings, and, um, guys, we need to be seen there because, as Commissioner Reddick can tell you, some of those things that they're talking about doing is, could be downright scary to what they could do to these counties with the funding we get, especially with dealing with Medicaid issues and things of that nature, because they're putting it on the state and county, they say, at the end of the day, the state and county is responsible for running those programs, but they're not telling people, at the end of the day, those funds for those programs come from DC.
Yeah. Okay, appreciate that, Commissioner Silver, appreciate you and Commissioner Reddick both, um, attending that, and, um, okay, anything else?
One last, I, I said one last thing while I was here.
Hey, you know, I know who's taking Patrick Crowell's place there, don't y'all? You got a joke, you know, Patrick used to always say, one last thing, but no, no one last thing. Go ahead.
Well, I just want to take the time, um, we may not have realized it today, but we really made a step forward with, um, vote, passing the vote to get the design started for the jail, so I just want to take the time for, to say thank you to Commissioner Webb for seeing that need and voicing that need a couple years ago, and special thank you to the staff that's worked hard and will continue to work hard, um, in the negotiations and make sure that we get that done for our county, because just realizing it should have been taken care of a long time ago, um, and we're in a situation now where we really need to, to build a new detention center, so just thanks to you all for doing it.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And I promise that's the last.
Okay. All right, anything else on the other business before I ask for motion to go to closed session? Good discussion, y'all, I know this is long, but it's great discussion. All right, with that being said, motion to go into closed session for...
Uh, to preserve the attorney-client privilege and to discuss also, uh, direction from the board on the acquisition of property.
Okay, Ms. Scott? Okay. Ms. Denton?
Same.
Okay.
Same as Attorney Rollins.
All right, with that being said, can I get a motion to go in closed session to those two items?
I'm in.
All right, motion made by Commissioner Burr, is that a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Davis. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Now, if we go to the restroom, can we get back at 1:02, please? Please, 1:02.
I'm not going anywhere, I'm just right here. I'm gonna turn my mic off.